We'll start the meeting. Please rise to the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to God, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the resolve with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming. We will start with item 1.0, which is a special presentation by the Advanced Video Production Class from Rockville High School. Mr. Wright. Yes? Thank you. Mr. Wright, and it looks like Mr. Bartosz is coming forward as well. Mr. Bartosz is director and producer of many of our videos, including our BCMS video, so we're quite pleased with him. And I think he brought me. Did you bring a few more students with you? No?
I have a couple.
A couple, right? Thank you. The Video Production Class doesn't just do things for Rockville High School and for classwork. They engage in authentic learning and therefore produced a video that was sent to a contest in Washington DC of the White House Film Festival. So we're quite proud of the honorable mention we received. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Wright and to Nick.
So I just want to talk about the project just for a minute here, and I'll let Nick say a couple of words if he wants to add to it. From all the research that I did, we were one of two schools in the state of Connecticut to receive honorable mention. One was a magnet middle school out of New Haven, so we would be the only high school to receive that award, which is really exciting. There was 2,500 entries into the contest, and we were, like I said, one of the finalists taking home honorable mentions. We were really proud of that effort. The project was really a collaboration between our Video Production Class and the Modern Theater Class out of the English Department. We had this vision that with the Advanced Video Production Class, we, you know, take advantage of some Mac computers that you got us a while back. Sykes had donated to us the DSLR cameras. So we've been able to take a cinematography approach, really teach kids how films are put together, you know, more than just set it up on a tripod and act in front of it, really get into the ins and outs of filmmaking. So the idea came actually last year that if we took the Modern Theater Class, who are the people that are training to be in front of an audience, would be the ones in front of our camera, we could have a really authentic experience. So we've used the Modern Theater Class to be our actors, and we've done the behind-the-scenes, doing the lighting, the sound, the recording, and the editing. So it's been a really exciting experience to work with them, so. I don't know if my filmmaker has anything else to add.
Nothing.
Okay. In terms of this story here, you know, we brainstormed for a day or two. We thought that, you know, Mr. Kibbe's, some of his adventures in the tech ed department made for a really great story and showcased, you know, the two things that my tech ed department is all about. It's, you know, cutting-edge technology in STEM and cutting-edge technology in, you know, communications. And, you know, it's, we really couldn't do it without the support of you guys. When the kids come into the classroom and they see the new cameras, they see the lab full Mac computers, they get really excited. It's cutting-edge to them, and, you know, we appreciate the support. So here's our video.
For years, Rockville High School has been teaching about alternate green solutions. Our electronics and engineering department has shined light on this by building the Mac Lab car.
They have a computer system with a timer, a magnetic timer, so they can show acceleration, deceleration, and they can judge who's the fastest within a thousandths of a second.
Our green team entered the Connecticut Light and Power Live Green Win Green Competition. We received a $20,000 grant to help fund our STEM lab.
There's something to do in school that's up to date with the most current technology that can make careers in this spot.
Another green solution we have available at our school is motion sensor lights. That way, if someone forgets to turn off the lights, we can save power when no one is in the room.
You can see them up in the corners where they pick up sound and, uh, and motion. Now, where'd you use that technology? You know those, uh, those vacuum fingers they have on the floor? The whole same technology.
In 2012, Connecticut got hit by Hurricane Sandy. Some of us even lost power for up to 10 days. The lack of power among us inspired a technology education teacher here at our school to build the Green Machine. The Green Machine is a green solution to power outages. On a smaller scale, the Green Machine, when fully charged by the sun, you can even power a refrigerator or a TV for up to a couple of hours.
Run on a gas, your generator, you pull this puppy out, and you put it in the sun, and then that night you can watch your TV for a couple of hours.
Along with that, our school has solar panels on route. Students can access power generation values for use in the classroom.
You can look online for Hartford, Springfield, Boston to see what you have for the Southern.
A green classroom will be a classroom of the future, and technology will get us there.
The batteries are charging.
Just like the treadle sewing machine was once revolutionary, we are now in the green revolution. Green technologies are even powering this school video.
Very, very proud of you. We have awards for, I know you're the only one here, Nick, but we have some for the other people who are involved. I will say their names, so Mustafa, Victoria, who hosts, Logan Laisdell, Taylor Metholz, and of course, Nick Bartosz. Thank you so much. We're very proud of you, and we just do a great job of representing Vernon, and we appreciate it. We'll give you these.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations for each other. Well, I don't think we can follow that. It's going to be kind of boring, but we're going to move on to item 2.0, Consent Agenda. Mr. Moore.
Motion to move consent agenda.
Is there a second? Mrs. Bush, a second? Does anyone want to pull any of the items? Mrs. Aron.
I just have a question for clarification. If we have not attended a meeting whose minutes I represented here, should we be abstaining from approving?
As long as you can read it.
No, as long as you can read it. I don't know. You know that they correctly represent the meeting.
Then, on whether or not we have a.
So whether or not I'm going to add a board meeting or not, I should approve the minutes of the meeting that I didn't attend?
You have the right to read them and approve them. If you like, you can abstain if you wish. Anything else? Want to pull anything? I just, we'd like to pull B. But before we discuss that, we don't want to pull anything else. All those in favor of A, C, D, E, F, and G? Okay, and you have extensions, or no? You have extensions. Okay. And B, which is the first exposure hearing. I just had a question on page one about the time. They said the meeting started at 8:15, and they came out of executive session at 7:45. So I think we've got 8:45. So with that amendment, does anyone want to make a motion to approve of that? Mr. Moore.
Motion to approve Consent Agenda 2.1B.
Is there a second? Mrs. Bush, second? Any discussion or comments? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Any extensions? Mr. Stansfield. Motion carries. Thank you very much. And now we'll move on to item 3.0, Secretary's Report. Opportunity for Board of Education to add or delete agenda items. Mr. Moore.
I'd like to add item 6.4A, which would be the budget adjustment request from the mayor, and copies are in the yellow folder this evening.
Is there a second? Mr. Kemp? Any discussion or comments? All those in favor of adding the budget adjustment? Unanimous? Mr. Moore.
I'd like to add item 6.6, which is Executive Session Regarding Information on Pending Claim.
Is there a second? Mr. Kemp? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Okay. Mrs. Aron.
I'd like to add item 3.3, called Communication.
Is there a second on that? Mr. Stansfield? Any questions or comments on that addition? All is fair? Okay, now we'll move on to item 3.2, Rockville High School. Olivia.
Good evening. Darren wasn't able to make it tonight. I think it was a wrestling conflict or homework bogged down with something, I'm sure. So the band and chorus concert is next Wednesday at 7:00 PM, and I encourage you all to attend. We've been working on our, both of our shows for quite some time now and think that you guys would really enjoy it. Tomorrow is book club, and next week, the author of the book that we are reading called Being Henry Davin is coming to the school and is going to be participating in classes, answering questions, and is going to be staying after for book club members to exclusively talk with, which is a great opportunity, and we can't wait to welcome Cal Armistead to the school. Mr. Rocket is back, and everyone's really happy about that. His presence has definitely been missing the halls, and there have been multiple Snapchats of Mr. Rocket sitting in the senior lounge and getting to know students, and it's really quite entertaining. So everyone's really happy that he's back. The boys hockey team, VCRs, having a really phenomenal season. They just represent everything that there is to be proud of for Rockville, and these boys have really worked hard and put in the time and effort, and it's really coming through. And I'll come back with more information on how they do in the finals, so I'll let you know. And also, the wrestling team had two people qualify for states, and so that was really exciting that we were represented among those weight classes and among the state because they also work really hard. Students are hearing from colleges now, and so it's really exciting to see. I know one of my personal friends got in a Dartmouth already, and we have kids waiting to hear from MIT and other prestigious schools, and so it's really interesting to see where some of these kids are going. But then they also say to beware the Ides of March, so we'll see the final result. And also, there's been a lot of discussion. You know, I've said before, you know, kids don't really know what the Common Core is or what they're getting into with the S-Back and different things like that. And so I think just something to take into consideration, possibly having a forum with some students. I know that you have them with parents and KTOs, and, but I think if you could get some high school students in here, I know a lot of them who are very well-spoken, who have a lot of questions and things to point out. And so I think it'd be really beneficial for everyone to understand where the students are coming from and for the students to understand where the board is coming from. And so I think that open communication may bring in new ideas, may bring to attention some of the problems that we face, such as the soundproofing for a burning elementary. So I think it would be a really great opportunity if it was well-advertised and students had an opportunity to use their voice without feeling intimidated. I think it'd be a really great thing, and I think you'd be very impressed, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions, Veronica? Thank you, Olivia. Okay, we move on to item 3.3, Communications. You better have no communications. Mrs. Aron.
I know that every other board meeting, we usually have an opportunity for board members to speak about something, and since it wasn't on this agenda, I appreciate you allowing this as an addition. I wanted to say a couple of things. One of them is that the Eastern Region Band and Chorus Program was at, was held at the high school this past Saturday, and the talent that was represented there was phenomenal. Close your eyes, you would never, ever dream that it was middle school students participating. It was an amazing program, and the students certainly deserve credit, but it was very obvious as well that all of the adults who support those kids in the program need to be thanked as well and recognized. And the other thing I wanted to say was Mr. Mandel's newsletter is just wonderful. I love getting it that way. We do get newsletters. I see that they come from usually the middle school and Skinner Road School. I'm hoping that we can encourage the other schools to provide a newsletter if they're not. It's part of our, one of our objectives to reach out to the community. I think it's a great way to transfer, translate information back and forth. So I know it's a job, you'd be looking for somebody to take on a job, but I think it's well worth it, and Mr. Mandel's efforts are just, I think, I think they set, his newsletter sets an example, and I always enjoy getting it, and I'd love to get more newsletters like that.
Anything else? Thank you very much. Anybody have any other communications? Okay, thank you. Move on to item 4.0, Community Forum. Opportunity for comments on agenda items, potential future agenda items, or general information provided to the board from citizens and community organizations. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board this evening? Please state your name and address.
Good evening, board members. I had to write this all out so I made sure I got all my words out to all of you. Over the past few months, I've learned more about the Vernon Public Schools system, how it works behind the scenes than I did as a board member. The things I have learned recently I should have known while serving on the board with Dr. Conway, the superintendent. I've had numerous conversations with administrators, teachers, and other employees of Vernon Public Schools since not being re-elected. Each and every conversation I had with these individuals started off with the same quote that's, "I can't, I cannot talk to you because you're not a member of the Board of Education." This was very alarming to me. I thought all the information being provided to me, that I needed to be an informed board member, I was getting, but this was certainly not the case. Current superintendent has instructed all employees of the Vernon Public Schools not to speak with board members, as everything needs to go through her. I know this order is still in place because I had the same experience this past weekend. The past couple of weeks, I've been thinking about all that I have learned, and I thought I failed as a board member, but now I realize that's not the case. I never had the chance to succeed because I was only told what the superintendent wanted me here, which was never the full story. I urge you all as members of the Board of Education to change the way the board members can communicate with the Vernon Public Employee, Vernon Public School employees. The gag order needs to be lifted immediately. You all need to open your eyes to the problems within the Vernon Schools administration. We are losing good administration, administrators, teachers, and parents, et cetera, because of the current administration. Vernon Schools are in real trouble, and we cannot afford to continue this way. I hope each and every one of you board members not only heard what I've said, but also listened to my words. Board members need to know all the facts and be informed. Thank you all for the time you give to the Vernon School system. I know what you're sacrificing to be on the board, as I did it. As a job, it is underappreciated and thankless, so I thank you all for being here.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board this evening?
I am Alex Demeter from Boy Scout Group 86, and I'm, I'm Alex Demeter from Boy Scout Group 86, and I'm a company owner with Scott Leachardt and Amy McCollough. We are here tonight to fulfill a requirement for Communications at Mary Pege and are very interested in hearing a lively debate. On a side note, I'd also like to just bring up to Superintendent Conway that, if you recall, last September, I made a call asking about the Eagle South Project to collect sneakers from all the Vernon Public Schools. I just thought to follow up and let you know that it went very well. I collected a total of 320 sneakers, and they are now on their way to Tennessee to be ground up and reused as support services around the country. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and welcome all of you. Appreciate you coming. Anyone else like to address the board this evening?
Lori Bedorek, 60, Patricia Drive. Not quite as prepared as I'd like to be with these comments, so bear with me. Going through the board packet for tonight's meeting, I saw some information that pertained to an email I sent to Mr. Vert and the board a couple of weeks ago about the Common Core workshop coming up this week, and that I'm hoping to hear truly from Mr. Vert and Dr. Conway why you feel Common Core and S-Back is truly the best thing for the students of Vernon. And I, and as I've looked at the information you provided in this packet, such as the Connecticut Common Core Standards Q and A, I have concerns if this is what it is, what you're going to be saying to parents this week. A couple of us, and actually, Mr. Kemp in addition, was at a town hall that State Representative Tim Akert held in Tallinn last week, and he had, you know, he talked about what's been going on and historically what's going on in the state right now, and he had said, you know, "Oh, if you want more information about Common Core, here, go to the Common Core website, go to the S-Back website." That's what we parents have been told, go to the State Department of Education's website. A citizen in the audience during question and answer said, "Telling us to go to a Common Core website for information on Common Core is like telling us to go to a cigarette company's website for information on tobacco." Now, I'm not trying to compare Common Core to tobacco use, but you question the validity of the information being provided. Obviously, the information you're getting is of benefit to the person providing it, but I don't, but we want to know what is the benefit to our students. If all I receive from this district is sales material and propaganda that Common Core and the State Department of Education are putting out there, I don't feel like you're treating me like a partner. An example here, this one really jumped out at me from the state's Q and A, is, "What do the Common Core State Standards mean for students?" That's the question. The answer provided on this document is, "This initiative helps provide all students with an equal opportunity for an education regardless of where they live." Really? So it's going to fund all schools in this state equally? Our students in this town are going to have the same resources as students in Greenwich? It's going to make sure all students are fed and have the support, their families at home? This district knows better than most that this statement is not true. I'm not saying I disagree with Common Core standards, I don't know enough about them. What I am saying is I am concerned with the information you provide when you tell us this is what is best for our students. Don't just keep giving us the sales pitches we're hearing from the state. Don't just keep giving us, you know, the ads from Common Core. We want to know why you feel this is what is best for the children of this town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board this evening? Okay, we will close Community Forum. Thank you, everyone. We will move on to item 5.0, Curricula. 5.1, Distribution and Use of iPads. You get to remember, we engaged in a year-long action research last year that was funded through a grant, and we had iPads in two particular kindergarten classrooms, and we're looking at the achievement of the students with and without iPads with the same teacher and have their kindergarten programs. We did not find any great differences at all in achievement. We did find attention span certainly was better when they were working with the iPads. They were more focused individually, but, but the achievement made no difference whatsoever. So we certainly still have the devices, and we're looking to deploy them throughout K1 and 2 in small, in small groups for stations. So we're not replicating last year's initiative as well. I'll turn this over to Mr. LeMoy and Mr. Vert.
Good evening, thank you. Dr. Conway pretty much covered what we plan on doing. Right now, we have the 50 iPads somewhat distributed, but what we're going to do is and plan to ensure that we provide five per class for every kindergarten using those existing iPads and then supplement those. We're looking at primarily alliance grant funds to do five per class in first grade, and along with that, we're going to ensure that we are providing professional development. As a matter of fact, Mr. LeMoy will be providing some, a weekly Friday, our early release day, as well as working with our kindergarten advisor, Mr. Waterman, to ensure that we are providing a rich environment for our students, because we know, having a kindergarten myself at home, that the iPad is engaging for those students. So using a station model, which essentially means you have small groups of students moving from activity, from activity to activity, this could be one of those activities. And through Mr. Gussin and Mr. Testa and Mr. LeMoy, we would have very specific apps on those iPads that are directed towards specific skills needed for individual students. So it was, it is a good plan, and we hope to, we hope to employ that following your approval essentially of moving these, it was originally intended as a study for two classrooms into this distributed model. Would you like to add anything to that?
Sure. We have enough iPads right now to populate all kindergarten classrooms, and two schools hold the first grade classrooms. Our plan is really based on that observation of amazing attention to the iPad is very engaging for the kindergarten students. And one of the things that the classroom teachers and the rest of the team had noticed and discussed was, this is an opportunity for differentiated instruction in the sense that if we have a student that is deficient in a particular area, we will have an app on that, on an iPad that that student can then use to then work on and practice those skill sets. So we're really using these devices on an individual level as well as a group level. So I think that is going to maximize the kind of efficiencies and results that we're going to see from the, from the use of the iPads. And so our department, upon your approval, will have these images ready to go, and we will get them up and running as soon as possible.
Any questions? Mr. Bush?
Um, to you, Chair. How many per classroom are you going to be putting in right now?
Right now, we can put five in each kindergarten classroom, and we have enough iPads to put five in each first grade classrooms at Maple Street School and Lake Street School.
Okay. Can I continue? Yeah. Okay. When you're going to be getting the apps, how are you going to be putting them in, and are there, is there going to be charge for the, charge for the apps? And are you going to have to go to each device and download an app, or is there going to be some control for the teachers?
Sure. As you know, as you may know, the school district has opened up the policy to allow teachers to utilize their own personal accounts to download free apps if they choose to do so. And so free apps are very easy for them to do, and so teachers can identify apps that they think will be perfect for their classroom, and again, individualize those iPads to their classroom experience. In terms of how that process happens, the district has a piece of software that we use, provided by Apple, that allows us to place apps on iPads en masse, so we're not doing them one at a time. We can collect them, put them into our process, and have them each come out with exactly the same configuration depending on which model we choose. So that makes it very efficient, very, very quick for us to make those changes, and so that's basically how we do it.
You said you're going to have professional development to prepare the teachers. Will there be continuous professional development so that we can utilize these to the best of their ability?
Absolutely. We have several strategies in mind for how we're going to do that. We have several strategies in mind for how we're going to do that. The training that I'm going to, I'm going to be doing, we will actually be filming it. And so those clips, those film, that film will actually be available to teachers so that if they forget something or want to go back and try to remember how they, how it was that we talked about something or what we did, then those will be available to them preserved. And that will be available to anyone actually who has an interest in it. More than likely, that'll be on our secure side of our network so that's something that teachers can get to directly. In terms of ongoing support, I'm always available to teachers and if a teacher reaches out to me in an email and asks me to come by and provide a little one-on-one type, I'm always happy to do that and then so on many occasions.
We also be continuing our work on Reader's Rights Workshop and that'll be embedded into that process as well as a math workshop model.
One more? You said that you would need to purchase some to continue to fill the first grades in the other schools. Do you know how many you're going to have to purchase?
Last time, I think it was 35.
35, yeah.
And that's through the Alliance District Funds?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? Comments? You said, Mr. Burt and Mr. LeMoy both said with, with the board's approval. Are you looking, approval for distribution, approval, I mean, this says no action required. I thought you both referenced board approval for purchase or for distribution or what?
Well, I guess under the original grant, it was intended for that study. So now that we are changing the nature of the grant, my understanding is that then we would have to have the approval from the board.
To distribute them the way you just outlined?
Yes.
I just think one more point of clarification. The board did request in the fall at the report from the previous year for us to bring that back. And so the board certainly may want to weigh in on that, but the board had asked us to bring back the use prior to implementation.
Has the cost of those 35 iPads been aligned to alliance funding?
We are currently going through the process of determining the alliance budget for next year. And that is one of the key initiatives that we are going to prioritize.
Does it make sense for us to, to approve? I suppose we could approve the distribution of the ones that you have to the kindergarten classes?
Yes.
And then we'll wait to hear from you? Okay.
Through the chair, in essence, that would be approving the model. And then how we found that, whether it be this year or next year, it would then continue on in the future.
I move to approve the model presented by Mr. Burt and Mr. LeMoy for distribution of iPads.
Sir, second. Mr. Stansfield?
Sir.
Any other questions or comments? Concerned? Mr. Kemp?
Yes, I, I all would support it, but I would have preferred to have seen something in writing laid out prior to this evening.
Any other questions? I almost am favoring motion to approve the model for distribution of the iPads. It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And one more point, revision to the Vernon Teacher Evaluation and Development Plan.
As you know, a year ago, actually a little less than a year ago, the board approved the latest version of the Teacher Evaluation and Professional Development Plan. A teacher includes all administrators as well as teachers. The State Department had requested a waiver from the federal government on certain aspects of the plan. They've received that waiver and have just sent us information that we may change our plan a little bit. And so Mr. Burt is looking at some changes that would take effect actually this spring to reduce some of the load that, that we have in terms of direct observation or formal observations of teachers, not to eliminate it by any means, but to reduce that load. So he has presented, I think it's in the landscape version, the current language and new language. We still would have to, after the board's approval, have to submit this to the State Department for approval. So it's not a done deal even at that. I'll turn this over to Mr. Burt.
Thank you. As you can see through some of the letter that was provided along with it, there's been some significant input into the legislature, into the governor's office, into the commissioner's office about some consternation about the evaluation plan. And through that, some recommended changes were taken from the PEAK group. And these are for this year. So these approvals must be brought to the board before March 30th for their approval and then sent to the state. I review those in a moment. In addition, we anticipate on our evaluation committee that we will be coming forward to the board prior to the end of the school year with additional changes for next year in light of some of the revisions to the requirements of the CED model. Also in light of the fact that we received a waiver for tying evaluation to state assessments this year and they've applied for that again next year. So with that in mind, and obviously if it was approved this year, there's chances that it'll be approved next year. With that in mind, we're going to bring forth a revised version. I did not revise the entire document because we will be most likely bringing forward a more streamlined document. So instead, I provided you just the amendments with the specific sections. I can put in page numbers there as a revised version if you would like. I did not do that, I apologize, but the pertinentness and the pertinent aspects are here. And so I'll be looking forward to that, that conversation. We are hopeful through this process in the future that we can target various specific observations for students to, I mean, for teachers to help them grow. Right now, the approach, there are five domains, two through six, in the CCT that administrators are responsible for observing and collecting evidence on. We are, we are planning to hopefully target domains two, which is classroom management, domain four, which is actually instruction, higher thinking skills, transference of, of learning over to students. We're hoping to have a more focused plan on those two areas. So it actually is a growth plan for teachers rather than the burden on teachers providing evidence in those other areas, or administrators having to go do multiple observations to try to find out evidence in those areas. For example, domain number five is assessment and review of data to influence instruction. And typically, you know, say you're a high school history teacher and you've just given a test, you know, I'm not going to observe the test. I would then have to go and want to either have a conversation with you individually about that, or if you're hopefully working collaboratively with colleagues on that assessment, go and observe that and, and scheduling of those is difficult. So again, we're looking for a streamlined document. So if you turn to the pages that are in the landscape, I can give you the significant changes. The current plan requires two student learning objectives or outcomes with multiple IAGDs, which are the specific indicators. In other words, you need to target, if I have a classroom of 20 students in third grade, I need to target all 20 students. I need to measure where they are currently, which was in the fall, and then give a goal for them individually towards the end of the year where they should be. And that individually means if I have a group of 15 students that are all in one arena, I can group them together. But then if I have a couple of high flyers, I need to target their growth as well, as well as anybody who's in need of other assistance. With the new plan, we go from two to the option of having one. Now, it's an option because this is 45% of their evaluation. So if they go to only one SLO, then they're putting all their eggs in one basket. The teachers that I've spoken with individually have all primarily gone to one SLO. And we are trying to ensure through our conversations that these are the high leverage strategies and high leverage objectives that they would have with their students. That's, that's been going well and that's been a relief for both administrators and teachers. Because teachers are required to collect data periodically on all of these individual indicators and then provide that data mid-year, which is just this month, and then by the end of year, which would be in May and June. So if we can target practice in one area, reading for instance, then that's hopefully getting more leverage. The second area is observations. As you can see, we are not changing in most cases the idea of the formal and observations. Informal, the definition of formal in the plan is a full-length observation, typically over 30 minutes. Informal is shorter, somewhere in the range of 10, 20 minutes. And those forms can be both announced and unannounced. Announced observations require a pre-observation and a post-observation. The unannounced require only a post-observation. So you can see in the current plan, there's some additions of the three informal observations. Through discussion with the committee, we determined that there's other ways to collect information other than having to do these more informal observations. Clearly though, if there is an area of need for an individual teacher, these are minimum standards. So we can do, you know, five formal observations and eight informal observations depending upon the need of the individual teacher and their growth. The focus now moving forward, because primarily at this point, most new teachers have had two observations and typically only have one left. Going back to what I previously said about domains two and four, that will be the focus of those observations rather than trying to look for everything. They will specifically look for classroom management in the instruction piece, which is that last sentence there, the focus on domains two and four. Year three and beyond, teachers who were rated proficient in 2012, 13. And I need to explain that a little bit. We did not have a proficiency rating in the past. What we are doing, and this is one of the issues that the state may have with this plan, is that we are basically saying, were you on what was called appraisal, which is needed assistance or not? So this is the definition we are using as proficient would be a current level three out of four-point scale. Those on appraisal, we would consider a level one or, and not at the standard essentially. So year three and beyond are rated proficient. There is a combination of three formal, informals in the, in the old plan. One of them must be a formal full-length and that one was determined to be unannounced. In the new plan, we are recommending a minimum of one formal unannounced in-class observation. And then again, based on need, further observations on individual ratings and need to gather evidence on specific indicators. And notes, on appraisal, the plan stays primarily the same. No change in the number of formal observations. The number of informal are determined by the need and gather further evidence on the CCT and going back to that focus on domains two and four. If you turn to the next page, there is one more piece. This is the summative review that comes at the end of the year. And this is where the mid-year conversation is primarily just a check-in. It's to see where you are in the different aspects of the plan and to give an indicator to a teacher about where they are. There is a relatively complicated formula to weight out each individual domain and then you assign it some points and then you gather a total points and then you're given a range. So to do that mid-year without all the evidence gathered in all the domains is impossible. So, but you can give your best, you know, range where that teacher sits in terms of the plan. At the end of year, this is where we need to gather all the evidence, make the official declaration for each of the domains. Each domain has specific indicators. For instance, domain two has A, B, and C. And then you would rate those teachers on individual areas in a four-point rubric. Again, trying to gather all that information seemed very difficult for most administrators and teachers. So one of the options, as you can see the large board there of the plan, is for domains five and six, which is assessment, and domain six is professional development and conducting oneself as a professional, is the ability for teachers to provide a reflection on their growth in those areas. That would be uploaded to our online system called Blueboard and then it could be tagged by the administrator and rated that way. One final note, part of the plan, we are required by September 15th, the committee, to give a report to the board on the status of our data collection system. In other words, we're going to evaluate whether we believe it's effective or not. But right now, we did receive notification from Blueboard that we will continue to receive that service free of charge for next year. And so our plan as of right now is to continue with that service. So thank you and I'm looking for any questions.
Do we have any questions? Mr. Kemp?
Thank you. Very pleased that there are changes. More flexible arrangements, flexibility being the operative word lately. Paragraph four in the January 29th publication refers to the enablement to decouple state standard testing and educator, educator evaluation. And further in that sentence, it concludes with pending federal approval. I was anticipating cooperation with the state. Could you clarify where the pending federal approval fits, please?
Yes, as part of the race to the top funds, we applied for a waiver essentially from No Child Left Behind, which is the original legislation to this back, you know, 13, 14 years ago. So the waiver to that, that plan, we had to go through, the state of Connecticut, not we, had to put forward a formal proposal of how they would address the needs of students. It's essentially a grant and that's how we get the funds in, into the state, the race to the top funds. Part of the requirements of the race to the top was to tie teacher evaluation to standardized testing. And due to the switch over to S-Back and the uncertainty between, you know, what districts are doing CMT and S-Back this year, there was an official request of the federal government to decouple those. And that was finally approved. They reapplied for that for the 2014, 15 year. And my assumption is since they heard about, right about recently in January, I'm guessing we'll hear about the same time next year.
I didn't quite follow you. You said it was approved at the state or has the, has the federal government approved the changes?
Sorry, the state requested the information, requested to the federal government.
And have, has the federal government approved the changes requested by the state?
Yes, for this year.
They have?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right. Excellent.
Any other questions?
Yes, on the second page, there's a quotation from the head of the School Administrators' Association referring to a, that these flexible changes are their initial step. Being a member of that organization, could you share with us what you feel your, your state association feels might be a next step?
Again, you know, it's, I think it's looking at the nature of the observations realistically and then re-examining a state assessment piece. And another significant area would be those areas of observation for teachers that don't teach, you know, language arts or math or have some association with that. I'm thinking our ROAC teachers, for instance, there's, it's, it's difficult to work through the evaluation system for those teachers if we tie them to the state assessments. And I'd like to see some flexibility for administrators. One of the pieces of the document is that the document primarily, and the standards for administrators are primarily geared towards building administrators. And under my own department, I have a number of folks I oversee that are not in buildings and so it's difficult to translate that language into their role.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions? If there's anything else, this is our.
Mr. Burt, do you think that the amount of time the teachers are, are using to gather data and assess the data and deliver the data is, is appropriate?
I would say it's an appropriate use of their time.
Right.
Yes. I personally am observing teachers at one of the elementary schools and I had mid-year conversations about SLOs and the IAGDs. And those were very rich conversations and very targeted for individual students. And I found them to be very valuable as did the teachers. Again, with the data collection right now, primarily teachers are doing that and they're a great look, et cetera, are trying to enter into our SRBI database or IPAS. We are very hopeful with the introduction of a new student management system next year. That will be much easier to collect that information and for me to see it rather than having them print out something or give me a copy of it that I can be able to, as an administrator, see that data rather than having to request it from the teachers. I think the reduction from two to one would help with that situation as well in terms of the SLO.
Well, it's a temporary reduction though, right? But anyway, so you think that, that the time that they're spending, it's not instruction time, isn't, isn't negatively impacting the educational outcomes then? You expected all of this process will positively affect educational outcomes for students?
In general, yes. I'm sure there are frustrated teachers out there that with the process, we did spend time in the beginning of the year developing assessments because we didn't have any in many areas. And so that's probably a level of frustration, I would acknowledge that, developing them, making sure they're valid and reliable and then implementing them and assessing them. But overall, the shift of focus and evaluation strictly from just observation of teacher now shifting some of the, you know, a percentage of that to students and seeing their growth, I think, is a positive piece. Again, I can only speak specifically to the teachers that I'm working with individually, but it's been, it's been a very rich conversation. And I And I have had some anecdotal evidence from other administrators that they are finding those conversations to be valuable as well.
Well, I, I understand the value of a conversation to kind of, to Mrs. Bajoric's comments that the, we're saying, we, administration is saying what they're supposed to say and supporting what they're supposed to support. I'm just, and, and your answer about rich conversations is conversations, it's not educational outcome. So my concern in the end is, is all of this, is all of this worth it? And I guess the proof will be down the road, and I certainly hope that it is, but this seems to be very intrusive in classroom learning.
Anyone else have any questions?
You commented on the status of the data collection system, and you have to report that to the board in September, and for now, you're going to continue with the free system. Is that because it's a good system or is that because it's free?
A combination of both. Right now, it is, if we did not have this system, we would have to develop something in-house. So there are criticisms of our Blueboard. I do have my own criticisms. I have been contacted with the developers in many cases, but they are being responsive and they are all working on that. So I think part of the frustration again, start of the year was that it was a late introduction. We were hoping to give some training in August, and realistically, the system wasn't up and running until mid-November from the state, from this, from this particular company. So it is working. There are some hiccups to it. They did do many public forums, so I'm hopeful that it will be, will improve. Is it a perfect system? No. I won't, I won't sit here and say that, but it is a system that we can use and we can gather the information for.
Are there other systems out there? Are there options?
I'm sorry, excuse me. Yes, there are. Primarily have to pay for those systems.
Sometimes you get what you pay for.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay, this does require a motion. Mr. Bull?
And make a motion that the Board of Education approve the revised Vernon Teacher Evaluation and Development Plan and present it to the seat.
It's the second. Mr. Kemp? Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item 533, Common Core State Standards.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. The, as you know, Mr. Burt, we'll be giving an information session at 6:30 on Wednesday night at Vernon Center Middle School, so I'm praying for good weather. And we just wanted to present the board with kind of an executive view of this. We did give you a few handouts. There are many, many, but just to, to give you some sense of where it came from, the origins and, and what it is. And Mr. Bull, Mr. Burt has prepared a PowerPoint presentation for Wednesday evening that will be much more detailed, so I'll turn it over to him to share that.
Again, thank you very much. I'm just going to provide you with an outline tonight rather than do the entire presentation. Again, do it on Wednesday night. I am very aware of the angst surrounding both Common Core and Sback. My goal of the evening is to try to clarify the process that brought us to this point for both of those items. And also, and specifically with the Common Core, some of the changes that are associated with that, but also some consistency. One of the things that we do have to acknowledge is that we've had standards in Connecticut for a long time, and looking through them, many of the standards do correlate to the Common Core. And having worked with a number of administrators and working with Mr. Gusty and Mr. Testa, that they have been implementing these with the teachers, they've been working with them intimately, and they believe in the benefit of them, as do I. And I will hope to convey that to the public as well and hopefully allay some of their fears with the Common Core. I am going to give a background on the, on what we are in terms of standardized testing. CMT started back in 1985. CAP was more recently in late 1990s. And some of the nature of that testing and then was the nature of the new testing, some of the, you know, some of the concerns. I'm going to try to again, answer some of those questions associated with the implementation of the Sback and some of the benefits to it, and of course, some of the drawbacks. And then we're going to review the decision, why Vernon decided to go with the Sback this year and then allow for some questions.
Mr. Denzel.
I'm going to raise an unpopular subject here, at least around this table, maybe not so much in the audience. I've seen copies of the guidelines from the State Department of Education that were sent to the district, and I've seen copies of the letters that are being sent to parents who are requesting information about opting their children out of taking this testing. I am fairly disturbed at the over-threatening tone that I feel is in these letters. I recognize that there is no statute that says that a child can opt out of testing, but there's also not a statute that says that a child must take the testing, and there is no penalty if a child opts out of testing. And while I believe ultimately in the good that we are attempting to do with Common Core and the Sback testing, I feel that threatening parents is not an appropriate way for this Board of Education to communicate with the community. And I strongly hope that a, an official position can be released that isn't quite so blunt to the parents, and that we can hopefully work with these parents to convince them that this isn't a bad thing, that we understand their concerns, but that at the end of the day, there is not a penalty if they do not have their child take this test.
Mr. Denzel. If we go to page three of the Connecticut Common Core Questions and Answers, in the one, two, page four, well, the third bullet down under Smarter Balance, summative assessments, blah, 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 says however, there will be an option of participating in the Smarter Balance field test in 2013-14. Does that mean the district or does that mean individuals?
Through the chair, it is a decision for, you have to do one or the other as a district.
So that was a district decision? That's not a, that's not an option for a parent?
No.
My only, my only suggestion, Mr. Burt, would, would be, I have a difficult time keeping up with all the acronyms. I have a very difficult time. So I, I hope that you will limit your use of acronyms at the meeting because people don't know what, I mean, I'm not the gold standard, I don't mean that, but acronyms are very difficult to absorb. Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Kemp.
I'm not sure if Mr. Burt was, was done with his initial, yes, okay. Well, then I, as long as we're on that page, I did want to ask about the, the statement where it says the 11th grade assessment will help schools determine, et cetera. Correct? Okay. Now, I'm not sure which seminar I might have sat in on, but it's my understanding that the test results for the first year will not be, be delivered back down to the district level at least, and what they, there remain at the state. Is that clear to my understanding?
The, the most recent information that I have is that we receive aggregate information, which means for school-level information, most likely sometime in January of 2015.
Okay. Well, then, I mean, wouldn't you agree that that doesn't really do much good at that late stage to help teachers assess where the students are if all we're seeing is a 30,000-foot overview of the results?
No, it would not provide any information to teachers at that point.
Well, then you have to agree here that what's in writing where it says will help schools to determine whether students have mastered the skills and content needed and how best to support them is kind of up in the air because without that drilled down to the student level, you can't do it.
Through the chair, that is for this year. Starting next year, associated with the Smarter Balance, will be interim assessments as well, which are provided by the state, which are customizable by teachers, is the understanding. I haven't actually seen them, is that they're customizable and they can give you very specific data of those students. You can do a fall, winter, and spring screen prior to the implementation of the Sback in the spring of 2015. Also, after the intent of the Smarter Balance being online is that you would receive nearly almost immediate feedback on individual students' progress. There's a number of advantages to being online. To give an example, most recently, our state data, our CMT and CAP data for those tests that are, my children are actually taking right now, did not get back to the district sometimes until almost right before the start of school year, the following year, in September and late August. So you can imagine if you're a third grader taking the CMT in March, the amount of growth that you've done between March and June and hopefully over the summer. So by the time we get those results in August, it really does not give as much insight as you would like to see for individual students. Obviously, as you get older, some of the information specifically to reading levels was something that you can use, hopefully to give teachers prior to the school year, you know, for instance, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, that can help use in terms of readability and grades. One thing I do want to emphasize, and I will be emphasizing this during the, during the presentation, is that this is a snapshot. This is one element. This is not defining our students. No one I know of in the administration here believes that this is the one thing that we should use to determine success and achievement of our students, of our schools, of our teachers, and our district. We are, we are fully committed to multiple types of assessments, formative assessments, which essentially give you that where your students are for now, gives you information, we talk about informative, versus a summative assessment, which is what this assessment is and all previous standardized assessments. Those are summative, that's at the end. You know, what have you accomplished up to this point? So we are, we are not targeting or pigeonholing our students based on one piece. Now, what that line means is I believe currently in our policy is that we tie graduation to CAP, if I believe that is correct. So we would need to adjust our policy for our next year juniors. Right now, our current juniors took the CAP, so between now and, and next year, we would need to take a look at that policy. I believe that's what that statement is referring to.
Mr. Kemp.
Well, not that we ever really enjoyed the fact that we weren't getting CMT results as fast as we would have preferred. We never did. But then again, the technologies weren't what they are today. So that part of the, the benefit that we're being told the SBACs present are a more effective test, I thought, a more timely test, and presumably quicker test results. As much as a lot of this ship has already sailed, I don't see why we can't be pushing back and trying to get as much level of detail from the initial year's SBAC results as we might prefer. I mean, is it the state's choice not to push it down to us or, or don't we have the option of saying, wait, we would prefer to see those numbers?
Through the chair, we absolutely can push for that. We can make a suggestion to the state that we are providing. One of the difficulties, of course, with that is that this is a initial stage of the, of the test, and, you know, you don't want to give false positives, if you will, or false data to individuals if they're still working on the test. You know, one of the pieces of literature does say this is a more rigorous test, it is aligned to more rigorous standards, and the general estimate is that we're going to see a dip in scores. And one of the reasons we advocate for taking it this year as opposed to, you know, holding off until next year is low stakes. It is, again, not tied to individual scores. It gives our students familiarity with the test. It also gives us significant information about areas of weakness in terms of our technology and, you know, frustration level for students. You know, we do have concerns about our third graders taking this test, and we want to make sure that they're able to do it, and we're preparing them for that. And we are, we have informed our administrators and will be informing our, our test administrators that if we see frustration in our students, we're able to address that on-site, that we're not going to subject them to continuously, you know, we don't want anybody in tears essentially. So because it is a low stakes, we're able to make those adjustments this year. So rather than going to, and maintaining the CAP and the CMT, which is no longer aligned to the way we're instructing our students, specifically K through eight, then we would want to move to the new assessments.
The commissioner's not an elected person, I am. We are. And so I would rather that we decide what we are going to receive for information and then we will deal with it, but have the commissioner, and I realize it's not your doing, so I'm not hitting the messenger, but what I'm saying to you is if that's what's being told to you by the state, that's, that's not acceptable as far as we're concerned, and we'll deal with the results of the testing for better for worse. That's okay?
Well, through the chair, it's well, it was in your right to craft a letter.
Well, I don't know what form we need to take this to through. Clearly, you understand my feeling and probably that of others, so I don't know that we need to create a formal motion unless someone wants to, and certainly the message is delivered. It's up to what do you want to do.
Mr. Kemp?
I suggest, Mr. Kemp, that we should be on the record with a motion requesting.
Okay. Want to make one?
No, go ahead.
Well, all right. I would prefer to rip something out then. I move that we request that the board, through the superintendent, request of the State Department of Education, the results of the initial year's SBAC testing. As soon as I can come up with, um, put a date on it, no later than, what?
How long is soon as they?
60 days and nine, what's reasonable, 90 days after completion? What do you think, 90 days? You know, I think, 91 days, we'll take it, right? Okay. But, uh, that's the motion.
Okay, I'm just going to read it back and make sure I have this right, okay? Move that, request that the board, that through the superintendent, request the results of the initial year's testing, no later than 90 days after completion of the test?
Okay.
And, sorry, did I forget, leave something out?
I was just going to make a friendly suggestion that we say in full because they are providing us results, they're just aggregated results, so.
Oh, okay. Results in full?
At the student, at the stu, whatever is the right educational phrase for it, at the student level, not, as opposed to in aggregate.
How about disaggregated results?
Disaggregated, thank you. It's a little better.
Okay. Now, is there a second on that, Mrs. Kemp? Any further discussion or, Mr. Bull?
I just want to say, you know, being an IT guy and understanding, you know, they're working the bugs out of the system, you know, it's when they talk about wanting to give aggregated information the first time around, maybe so that they can do some things behind the scenes to make sure everything is extremely accurate before they start getting this disaggregated information. I mean, not that there's ever any problems with any dot gov websites or anything government-related. Just, you know, it may be something like that, that they're trying to make sure that all the kinks are worked out, and we may be surprised by what we get back.
And then maybe they shouldn't have delivered it to us in the first place to give until it was, so we can go back and forth on that.
I, I agree. We want to make sure it's right, and that's why, you know.
So anyway.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor? All those in favor? Okay.
It's my understanding that if, if a parent opts their child out of the testing, that the child is considered absent? Is that correct?
For testing purpose, I'm sorry, she's been through, because Mr. Burt looked over here, so, for testing purposes, that's what we've been told by the state. So the child will be there, will most likely be reading a book and be with her classmates, and when the majority of kids go back to the classroom, the child will go back to the classroom with the teacher.
For a week, a child will read a book?
It's actually a 12-week period, and they will be coming back and forth in that. I think we've scheduled two, two weeks, two weeks, two weeks for the field test.
Two weeks per school.
Over, two weeks per school. They'll be going up, so we're going, because we're going to be moving Chromebooks, I think. Is that a guess?
That is correct.
Tell me that again, each school?
The testing is, the testing is actually a 12-week window in the months of, of March... The testing is actually a twelve-week window in the months of March, April and May. And what we're doing with the field test is we have assigned each school a two-week window so that we can move the students through during that two weeks. So they'll go in and take a particular test online and then they may go back the next day and take another one and rotate the classes in and out.
So how much time would one classroom, tell me how much time one classroom would spend testing?
If I recall correctly, about six, is that correct?
It depends on the grade level. It ranges from six to eight hours.
Six what, six hours?
Six to eight hours.
That's the best we can do?
That's marking.
Mark them absent and give them a book.
That's what we've been informed.
So we've been informed, can we choose to do something different and more appropriate?
And what would you suggest for, we will have one child, we have actually eight children in the district who have requested that, so I haven't heard back from, I've only heard back from one of those parents. We've sent letters to all of them, but I don't hear back from one of those parents. So I'm not sure what they're planning on doing. The child will be coming, be doing some sustained silent reading, more reading is good, but we don't have teachers to teach another class while they're in with the testing because the teacher will be there with the students.
And there's no other staff that could supervise?
We would love to have other staff to do that. I'm sure what they're going to do, supervise, they would be supervising reading, but they're not the teacher of the classroom, so they're not going to create a lesson to teach to engage the children during that time.
We don't have a resource to do that, to do something other than supervise reading.
And students will finish at different times and so they will be moving back into their regular class. So when there's a significant amount, there'll be a person proctoring the students who are left or who are continuing and the others will go back to the classroom. This is a work in progress this year. Figure out how to manage all of this.
In the general area of Common Core, I asked this evening, this same question the other evening in Tallinn and this representative wasn't able to go over it. He promised he would ask it. But basically, it's when will standards be provided for additional course, courses or subjects such as the sciences, the social studies and the humanities? Right now, we're discussing Common Core as if it's all basically in place, but it isn't. We're nowhere near able to understand what standards may be coming and what timeline for the rest of the shoes to fall. So if we're to prepare ourselves for those eventualities, we need to understand when it's going to come to the individual public school system level for each of those three. Now, maybe they're going to come all at once, maybe they're going to be graduated. I don't know. Do you have any feel for when the other standards are going to reach us?
Through the chair. Specifically, science, recently, there are national, new national science standards that were introduced and they are currently with the state of Connecticut and they are being researched and we are hopeful that they will be approved with the State Board of Education for use next year. Our science teachers are actually very enthusiastic about these new standards. They are, it's depth over breadth, it's critical thinking, they're aligned, it's stepped very similar to the math standards in the Common Core. If you're asking specifically if the body that created the Common Core is going to move into creation for science and social studies, that is not my understanding. Right now, we do have national standards from the National Council for Social Studies and those are guidelines for, and they just revised theirs as well, to be again, you know, instead of a mile wide and inch deep, they are going into greater depth. We are seeing this trend across the board. We just heard recently from the SAT, from the College Board, they're revising those. AP tests are currently being revised to, again, fuse more critical thinking rather than mentalization. So, and the national standards for social studies are being translated into Connecticut's social studies framework, which has been in draft, I believe, since 2001. I actually participated on the committee for a couple of years. But it's a very slow process. They were actually introduced to the State Board, I believe, back in 2009. The Board rejected them, so they're currently under revision. So the quick version is, nothing associated with the Common Core state standards for science and social studies. There are national standards in science and there are national standards in social studies. There's national standards for, you know, library media, there's national standards for local or language. It's how the state has adopted those. It's the state's responsibility since there is no federal mandate that says you must adopt the standards. It is up to the state to individually choose how they're going to address standards in specific disciplines.
I can't wait till fifty states attempt to adopt standards for the social studies. And I, I just, also, that doesn't align at all with international at all because the STEM courses, I can see where we're trying to compete with numbers achieved in other countries, but they don't teach the same social studies and don't have the same humanities issues that we have here. So what the alignment will be in terms of international comparisons, I have no idea. Okay, so it's recognized they're coming, but you really can't pinpoint when or what they'll consist of at this time.
Again, this national standards for science have been created and they're into the board system and we're hopeful, you know, our science department chair at the high school level is really hopeful that we get them soon because they're ready to write curriculum and they have the drafts of them and they're very enthusiastic about the changes. We recently underwent national standards for social studies. Those were recently revised into the three Cs and we'll give them more specifics another time. And we, they are translating those into the state standards. There is some push to just adopt those three Cs because they, the opinion of many of the social studies teachers is that those are very valuable for their discipline.
Can I ask what the three Cs are?
That's why I said we could do that later. I can't remember off the top of my head.
Mr. Burt, this past fall, we had a discussion about how this district was behind in writing curriculum that was aligned, English Language Arts curriculum that was aligned with Common Core. Where are we at now?
We've made significant progress, specifically due to our release day just recently passed. I actually collected a number of information from all the grade levels. I did an online survey and asked them some questions about the curriculum documents. So now I have a good heat map for each area. In K through five, we have made significant progress. I believe they're working on units three now. They are continuing to use the model, but in terms of fully writing it out, they are working on unit. We are also going to have an intense two-week session this summer with Teachers College, the actual originators, the Readers Writers Workshop Project for fifty of our teachers that are going to ensure equal representation from all grades and all schools in that area and really ramp up our education in that area. At the middle school level, I was able to meet with the English Department Chair during the release day and they, again, also made significant progress. They are using a single rubric for the dish, for the school in terms of writing, which is making significant progress. But we, I am very confident with our, what I'm calling the Curriculum Writing Academy, which is now starting on Tuesday, the, after the last day of school, the seventeenth, for four days, to have a crew of teachers to finalize that document. The new format is well-accepted by teachers. They appreciate it and it's really user-friendly and it's relatively short for them to complete and really have a document that they can use. And a new teacher, you can actually hand the document to them and they're able to see the entire year and what the plan is for the year. So I'm very hopeful that by the end of June, for the start of next year, that math in the LA will be articulated fully, K through twelve.
How about for this year at the elementary level?
Again, we are still, it's almost we're building their plans, we're flying it. We are going through the process. You know, we came into this, I came into this job in July, you know, there was not a lot of written curriculum anywhere. So I think we're making significant progress in twelve months.
So we still don't have it in a manner that can be rolled out to the coaches, who can roll it out to the staff, who can, that's just not happening.
We do have, we do have the overviews for each unit. So that's the global perspective, you know, what should be accomplished. We do have the standards and the objectives aligned for each unit. We are building assessments, they're aligned for each unit and they're common assessments across the district. Again, I'm speaking K five. And so there is the framework for each unit. But what we really want to see is those daily lesson plans. That is fantastic and that takes a long time, as you can imagine, to build those. But the nice thing about the Reader Writers Workshop model is you can take the larger concepts for that unit and you can backward design them. And so you can go into the week and you go into the lesson and then take the standard framework for Readers Writers Workshop, which is essentially an I-do, we-do, you-do model, where you model something with a team of students, you practice as a group and then you work individually with students on their reading and their writing. So you can take that format and use it. And I've been in classrooms in all the elementary schools and I've seen it with fidelity being implemented across the district, which is exciting to see. And they're all on the same pace, which is also exciting to see.
Mr. Stansell?
On the last page.
Mr. Stansell?
Hold on, I'm sorry. Regardless of how this all comes out, the one thing I do hope that we end up with nationally is more of a Common Core. When I moved here from Georgia in seventh grade, I was fairly startled at how topics like the Civil War were taught slightly differently, shall we say. I think we learned the words to Dixie before we learned the Star Spangled Banner. So even if it's just for children that move within the state and we know that we have a large transient population into and out of Vernon, I do hope ultimately that some of this does give us that framework for those kids to have a fairly common experience across the district. I think we all have legitimate concerns about the implementation, but I do hope that that is a value that we get out of this.
I believe it was called the War of Northern Aggression.
Absolutely correct.
Last time, Mr. Kemp.
On the last page, there's a reference to the 21st century and it says the 21st century skills are not inclusive and all of the skills students need for success in the 21st century, which is interesting. I didn't know that they were going to admit as far as the standards, the Common Core standards. So which of the 21st century skills are you aware of that are not being included in the Common Core standards? Because I think we're on the hook to, we voted to support 21st century, so now we're supporting Common Core, but it doesn't include all the 21st century skills according to this.
Through the chair. I am not particularly, I had not done a crosswalk between the standards and 21st century, but I can tell you, in general, the concept of 21st century skills is the idea of critical thinking, analysis. It is using multiple resources to evaluate an issue. It is project-based, it is student-centered, and those are all initiatives that we are undertaking here in Vernon. So again, if you would like, I could do a crosswalk and be more specific, but they may not be included in the Common Core, but we are, that is part of our strategy for improvement here in Vernon. If you take a look at the strategy, that is based on a number of 21st century skills.
Well, but not all of them. So I mean, this one kind of surprised me. I'd like us to have a better understanding as to what's not included at some point, please. That's all.
We will move on to item 6.1, Alliance District Year Three application update.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Fisher. Our Alliance Grant application is due on April 11th and so, of course, it needs board approval before it is submitted. We would be looking for that approval on the 24th of March. So even though the agenda brief says no action, that is new funding that has not been spent at all and that will come into the district this year. The second few pages were as the quarterly report. This was due several weeks ago and our meeting on Tuesday was to discuss the quarterly report and start an assessment, a self-assessment for year three to see what, where we might put things in that area. The, so in the pages this evening, you have three pages and one says Alliance District Funding on it. That is kind of a laundry list, a shopping list. These were generated by the entire administrative team at different points. And so you can see that the total of the shopping list comes up to $1.3 million. Obviously, we're not getting that much money, so we do need to prioritize. The second box, this is the, this particular document here, the second box on that indicates the changes from last year that are a given. It doesn't mean that there aren't other changes that we can make to the current grant. So these were in your yellow folders this evening. So the award increase, just to walk you through that bottom box, the award increase is $602,000. SMS is the Student Management System. That is the system Mr. Burt referred to that we are in the process of purchasing. We have chosen it. We are hoping for full implementation by August 1st. And so therefore, we won't be buying it again next year. So that $75,000 is freed up from the current funding. Two kindergarten teachers that we have moved into Center Road School, there's another $120,000 and so that is funding that in the Alliance Grant will be freed up and can be reused or used anew. And then kindergarten supplies, that was the, those were the supplies to get up to speed, brand-new kindergarten classrooms. So it included furniture and books and things like that. So any current funding that is in our local budget to fund all seven elementary schools. So when you add those things back into the $602,000, you come up with 858. So that is really our baseline. Again, there are other things that we could remove and I'll go through that. What I did, however, was we do have a lot of staffing in our Alliance Grant for Year One and Two. And so removing the kindergarten teachers and the other items that we've purchased that we will not be purchasing, again, I just added in what the increase to student, excuse me, to the teacher salaries would be for all of those staff members. And so I wanted to make sure I made adjustment for that. So subtracting 33. So really, 825,000 is a possible bottom line for the shopping list. But again, there is over $500,000 difference in the wish list and the other list. And I'm going to go through that list in just a moment. I just want to bring your attention to two other documents. One is, and I don't know if they all ended up in color in yours, I guess they did. This is the self-assessment. It is two-sided. The state has created four buckets and those buckets that they expect all of our initiatives to fall into would be talent, so talent development, you know, they have a talent development office. It includes evaluation, it includes coaching and professional development, leadership development, et cetera, recruitment and hiring. The next is academics. And if you look at the X's in these and the priorities that we've given, you can see under talent, sorry, I'll go back up. Talent, we've said that three of our areas, and we're pretty hard on ourselves, so three of our areas are in need of improvement because we don't believe we have systems in place that bring us to the next level in those. And then we have characterized those as high or medium level in priority. In academics, we're talking about the things Mr. Burt has just been talking about, Common Core aligned curriculum, academic rigor, fidelity of implementation and assessment system, data-driven instruction, that is absolutely key. That's why we're going to have the School Student Management System. We're very hopeful that data will be readily accessible. Support for special populations and SRBI and academic, you can see that we, again, have split our self-assessment between needs improvement and developing and about even. However, our priorities were hot. However, our priorities were high in all areas because we know that's where we are in Vernon. We cannot move ahead until, as Ms. Starne asked a few moments ago, the question about where are we, that's a question I probably ask, I try to hold off and ask every three weeks, but I'll tell you, I could ask it every day, is how far have we come in terms of curriculum development. Culture and climate, you can see that that's behavior management, and certainly with our PBIS system, wraparound strategy, family engagement, attendance. We have initiatives in many of those areas. Some of them we believe can be improved quite a bit, and that's why we marked ourselves lower in those areas. So even though we have a terrific community school, in terms of wraparound strategy, we do not have extended learning experiences across the district, and we only have that in one school. So we said it needs an improvement. You can see that the priorities there, especially for number five, graduation and dropout prevention, were very key. And then operations, budgeting, facilities, transportation, there's scheduling and extended learning time. Again, that's not the academic piece, that's the busing and scheduling that. Collaborative planning time, the board was very, worked very grateful to the board for supporting that this year. And we were able to do that mostly through the Alliance Grant, but that was something the board made a priority. Technology integration, you can see that we've set very low in that area, student enrollment and registration, we're starting in that area. So these were the four buckets. If you go back to that first sheet, on the left-hand column, where it says talent, academics, and operations, those were the three buckets that we organized our work into. Again, before I go through that list, I would like to share with you our 1314 list. And so you have a copy of that. This is a list that went into the, this you received this evening as well. This went into the application grant for last year because it was a nice summary of the staffing we had. And if you look at, you can see still, I think, the ones that are bold and the ones that are not. The ones that are not bold are the ones that have been in place for two years. The ones that are bold went in place this year, which is year two of the grant. Except for math interventionist under number three, it says 2.0, one of them was new. So one is for two years, and one is just this year, a new position split between two buildings. So that was the funding there. As we went through the grant for the first two years, I know I told you multiple times that I am very fearful of continuing to add staff in the grant. I'm fearful of the funding cliff that we will fall off of in three more years. And so the board has been very supportive in moving the kindergarten teachers in. Last year, or this current year, excuse me, we have our full kindergarten teachers at Northeast and Maple, supported by the board and local budget. Next year, the plan is to support 100% of the Center Road School teachers. And then my proposal to you the following year would be to finish that for Lake Street and for Skinner Road, so that they will all be moved in, because I am fearful, as I said, of that funding cliff. So I would then bring your attention back to the wish list, and it is a wish list. We did not leave anything out that was mentioned, although I may have not put in a bus. So you can see Columbia Teachers College, this is, Mr. Burt mentioned this earlier. We are fortunate to have gotten on the list and to be on the list to have a workshop this summer. And again, it would be pending the funding and the board's approval, but we have taken our steps to see that we could do it, because you can't do it later. And so that would provide Readers and Writers Workshop for 50 of our teachers. We would make sure that they were across the district, so that is a high priority for us. Mathematics subject leader and language arts subject leaders, we had those in our budget this year for next year, and we have removed them. So we're looking to do that. This is, Mr. Gussie and Mr. Testa have asked for these particular leaders among the elementary, and they've also asked to split them because language arts and mathematics are just a little bit different from K to 2 and 3 to 5. In our budget, we had asked for one for K-5, so this is a little bit different. Professional development, and it should be actually switched with the next line, professional development, $20,000, that is the four bullets that are under there. So I'm sorry, I've swapped the line, it's not my fault. So these are professional development in higher-order thinking, inquiry, authentic learning. This is very, very difficult to plan. This is CAGEN, there's an N there, CAGEN Cooperative Learning Structures. Maple Street has just had a workshop in that, and they are very, very excited about this cooperative learning. Developing teacher leaders and teacher coaches, we need more work in there, and administration needs to continue to grow. So we've just put $20,000 there in hopes that, you know, that growing teachers and administrators is very, very important. The next thing would be the video camera for lessons. We're looking for three video cameras, approximately $500 apiece. This would be for videotaping lessons and allowing a teacher to go back over the lesson and be able to critique themselves and learn from the experience. Also, used in professional development, any of our professional development activities. We would be able to put online then for people to use. So not only from teaching in the classroom, but using our new student information system, we'll be able to create an entire library of how-tos when people have forgotten to how to do report cards or how to create a report. The standardized assessment, we're not sure what one that is, but that would be shopping. We do not have one, we only have our internal assessments. Our internal assessments are only as good as we can make them. And so we're looking for an assessment that is aligned with the Common Core that would replace the assessments that we give three times a year. It would, they would be quick assessments, they would be immediate feedback, and give teachers information that they can use immediately in their teaching, in their classroom. The next five or six items, Mr. Gussie has, you can see that he really went with the candy store there. We need classroom libraries, we're looking for 300 books each, and that would be for all K through eight classrooms, language arts in six through eight, and some social studies as well. But these would be at least the K through five classroom libraries. There is a difference in the quality, the number of books in our classroom libraries between all of our schools and even between each of our classrooms, because our teachers very often supply books for their own classroom libraries. Brand-new books, that doesn't mean new, new books, it means that's a brand, a brand-new books. For K and 1, you can see the prices there. Classroom book storage, because if we got 300 books, we've got to have someplace to put them, and that would depend on the classroom, because there are some classrooms that have enough storage already. The Mondo libraries and the big books, when we look at those two, those would both together be the second priority against the other three, at least from Mr. Gussie's point of view. But still, we would want those. So since these are all one-time things, hopefully, you know, next year, if the funding, even if it remains flat, we will be able to spend some of that funding there. Benchmark education, including online texts, so that's in reading. Alex math software, that's a cut that was made before the board received the budget this year. The Alex software is very useful at the high school. Some of our students do use it. They'd like to extend it to the middle school, though we have not used it in the middle school. The next requests, as I said, I've not taken anything out. These were requests that were in your budget prior to you receiving the budget. Halftime music teacher at Center Road School, mathematics interventionist at two schools, reading interventionist, mathematics interventionist at the middle school. Those, as I said, were all removed from our budget in trying to keep our budget down. That does not say we don't need them. But again, I am very concerned about putting staff in the budget, in the Alliance District budget, for, only for three years. Mathematics 180, there's a program called Read 180, this is really Math 180, and that is a remedial program that students can work through on their own and then with teacher assistance, grades six through 12. There's the after-school bus. An after-school bus for Vernon Center Middle School, we're looking at four days a week. It would be enrichment, so we've spoken with Mrs. Lee about what possibilities she might offer for our students, Monday, Wednesday, or Tuesday, Thursday. Students could go to all four days, or go to one program or the other. So there would be enrichment, but there would also be opportunities for our students to extend the school day with learning as well. So that's, and that's really what it's costing us is the school bus. A possible dean of students at Maple Street School, that would be a teacher position. We do, we are still working with that school, and that is a request of administration in that school. Wireless inter-network, network, that's something the board asked for to be placed in the fund, so I believe that is a high priority. We then, since that was originally 150 and we brought it down to 92, we decided that we'd say, well, what does it cost for wireless at all the elementary schools? And so another 150 would go wireless at the other five elementary schools. The iPads, Mr. Lemoy, excuse me, the iPads, Mr. Lemoy and Mr. Burt were talking about earlier, $15,000 for full implementation for the rest of Grade One and all of Grade Two. Temporary data input, so this would be clerical support to ensure that we are able to come up to speed by August 1st in terms of our ASPN, our new student management system installation. And then document cameras, that was a request. There are many teachers that do not have smart boards and will not be getting smart boards. We have put 20 in the budget, they're still there right now in your current budget that you sent on to the mayor. And these document cameras would go to teachers who do not have them, and so then they have the opportunity of showing documents on the computer, on the screen, et cetera. So that is the shopping list. And sorry for not getting it to you, we were still formulating it Friday afternoon. I was writing this up all weekend, and Mrs. Buchanan was doing some typing for me this afternoon. So I truly appreciate that. But just so, just, you know, I would be very interested, as the rest of administration would be, in your thoughts and direction, because it's obviously going to come back to you for approval. So we certainly want to go in the direction the board would like to go.
Ms. Starne. Start with some questions then, okay? That cost for the after-school bus could possibly be correct.
Thank you. You are absolutely correct, Mr., and that is, we're missing, the decimal point is one place too far. So try 600, $6,680. Thank you very much.
I'm wondering if the request from Mr. Gussie for all of the books, would, I'm assuming all of those dollars would buy lots more readers, e-readers. Is that plausible, or do we need those books?
I think we need text. Students need to have real text in their hands. I would defer to your fellow board member, Mrs. Bush, who teaches in the lower levels. But Mr. Gussie did not, there are e-readers in the libraries, or there will be next year, I think, if we continue with the budget the way it is. But children truly need to get involved in text as opposed to the e-readers. So that's an option for them, but that would not be, and Mr. Burt may. Please, thank you.
Through the chair. There is possibility of e-readers, but you have to remember that to provide content on those e-readers is an additional cost. So it essentially balances out. For instance, in previous districts, we tried to do this at the high school level, and it was, even the startup cost was very significant to purchase one type of online text through the fall, actually.
Can I just go, oh, I'm sorry. I just want to ask, can they take e-readers home with them, or is they might be able to take the text home with them? Or is that, you would let them take the readers home?
My other comment is really just, I have a difficult time spending Alliance money on staff. And I know you've talked about, kind of, about moving staff investment into the board's budget. I think there's so many durable goods, for lack of, that we need, and technology and all that, I'm hard-pressed to spend Alliance dollars that are going to go away on people rather than teaching tools and other things that the system needs.
Who else we still? Oh, Mrs. Bush.
I do agree that in the elementary levels especially, the students need to hold those books. They need to turn those pages, that's all part of the concepts of print. But what I'd like, I know that in my classroom, I probably have pushed in 1,000 books. So I would not, even though I would love more books, I would like to see an idea of the need, instead of just giving every teacher a classroom library, you need to really look at the needs of the teacher. Do they need, do they need informational text? What type of text they need? And things like that, because there are teachers, some of the newer teachers don't have extensive library as some of the teachers that have been there. So I wouldn't say a blanket hand teachers a library, because there's a lot of books in a lot of classrooms that we could use the money in a better way. So it would have to be a request from a teacher or something, instead of just saying, everybody gets 300 books. Because some of them might even be duplicates of a lot of the books that the teachers already have within their classroom. So I would be for really getting a better idea of the needs of each teacher, you know, saving a little bit to put somewhere else. And I agree that we do need to put it into hard goods instead of, instead of as much people as soon as we possibly can. The other thing is definitely the high priority. I would like to make sure we get that wireless network in to the middle school, and if it is within our ability to put it also into the elementary schools as well. I think that's quite important, and that will, we will reap the benefits from that for many years to come. But that's my take on the list right now.
Mr. Burt, did you have a response to the books?
Through the chair, yes. Mr. Gussie could not attend this evening, but I did ask him when we started to consider this Alliance Grant back in early fall, to go and do an inventory of all the classrooms. So this is an average, but we know, even from walking in different classrooms, that there's a big variety between the library classrooms. But this is, he spent a lot of time on this number, and I fully believe in this number that will bring us up K through 5 to the appropriate level. You know, for instance, a level F reader, for instance, in some school, in some classrooms you have a bin of readers, it might only have, you know, two or three books, unfortunately. And then another classroom might have 30 books. So it's, you know, for those students, two or three is an exaggeration, but it's fewer than another classroom. And for a student at that level to have more text to be able to read. And one of the things also, we look through the inventory of the libraries, that in the past, there's a strong tradition of a lot of fiction. But we know that there's a drop-off when they get to middle school, that they're not exposed to nonfiction, that there's a tremendous learning curve for the next three to four years, even up through high school, if they're not finished studies earlier on to nonfiction. So a good portion of this is also dedicated to nonfiction. But it's not a lump sum, it's not everyone's going to get the same package, is my understanding from Mr. Gussie.
Mr. Stansell.
Just a couple comments and then a couple questions. I absolutely agree. I think the wireless in both the middle school and the elementary schools needs to be a priority based on the technology that we're already putting into the school system. And the middle school, obviously, we intentionally rolled it to this fund rather than leave it in the budget, or put it in the budget. The e-reader versus book discussion is an interesting one. As someone who has thousands of books in their house and who started working in a library when I was 13 years old, I have a lot of respect for the paperback books, but I also know that I now have thousands of books on this. And that's a significant difference, and that is the way the world is going, as much as book lovers may hate it. as book lovers may hate it. And you're not just asking for $197,000 for books, you're asking for $41,000 to build the storage for those books. $41,000 in, say, cheap Amazon Kindles? You don't want to know how many that is. They're $49 apiece. I realize you've got to put content on them, but $197,000 worth of content would go a long way, too. So I recognize that it's a, it's a fairly radical shift. I just want to lay that out there, especially in light of the data that we had earlier talking about how the iPads kept the kindergarteners' attention span longer. It is what it is, but anyway. The question I had specifically was around the two kindergarten teachers at Center Road School, I had them. Is this a new staff implementation?
No, they were in our Alliance district funds this year, but they've been moved into the local funds for next year.
So this is a reduction, not an addition?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
We added it to what funds will be available. Anyone else have, do you have any other questions? Mr. Hall.
Yeah, a couple of things. I heard the discussion on the wireless, you know, I definitely like the idea of having BCMS wired, wirelessly this year, and, you know, we might have to do it in our own regular budget, but this would be a good source. The question I have is whether or not doing the elementary schools this year makes sense? Whether or not we'd be able to take advantage of that, because we saw it took longer to get the high school up to speed, they're just about there, it sounds like. The CMS is going to take a bit of time, and the question is, would we be able to get the elementaries all up if we were to fund it this year, or is it something that, you know, we're spending money, but we're not going to see a benefit? Could we potentially do this in the next increase? Because this increase is supposed to occur over the next couple of years. Just want to put it out there as a question. You know, I don't say eliminate the idea, let's maybe look at potential funding in the future. Question I have on the dean of students, the teaching position that you're speaking about at Maple Street School. Is this a position that we'd be looking for, for a long term, or is this a interim solution, so that if we did fund it in here, it wouldn't be as great about the fiscal cliff aspect of it?
Yes, it is an interim-type position. So I would expect when this grant goes, then that position would go, not sooner. It was, we've been talking with the current interim principal, also Dr. Prissell, Mrs. Parker Jones. I anticipate that Ms. Trenton will also be interested in that. It's very difficult for the administrator to focus on teaching and learning and move the school where it needs to be. Children in all of our schools are just as capable as children in the other schools. And so, but there's baggage that our kids are bringing to school, and it manifests itself in behaviors that are not appropriate for school. And so to be able to have someone deal with those behaviors, so that the principal can do the teaching and learning, is, is something that may help this school turn the corner. So it's, you are right, though, it is not a permanent solution at all.
Okay, so, I mean, putting that into this type of a format, it could potentially make sense, because, you know, put it in, you know, the budget, it's something we'd be cutting from our budget a couple of years down the road. Okay, that's a good feedback. And one other question, I mean, in the classroom supplies I'm going to talk about with all the different reading materials, again, I would ask the question about this scale of what we purchase. I mean, is this something that, you know, if we did all put in one time, I mean, does it all get put into place quick enough, or is this something that if we, you know, phased it in a little bit, so that we can come in at a, you know, the 825,000 number that we're trying to get to, that if we scaled that back a little bit, that it would still work?
If I may through Mrs. Fisher. The, I spoke with Mr. Gussie about his list, and that, of course, is his, is truly his wish list. He believes that these, all of these materials were in classrooms, the resources would be incredibly rich for our students, and it would help their reading to have all of these went pushed, which I certainly did. He indicated that the Mondo libraries and the big books, which apparently go together, that those would be the second priority. And so I said, if you could not get everything this year, he was looking to make sure that everyone had a classroom library, and then the K1 brand-new books, and then book storage where it was needed. He just went, because we were just doing this, we got the number last Tuesday, so we were just pulling together to do this. He only went to one location for portable storage like that. So that could also be very, much less. But that was, he just said, well, I found bins and a part to hold the bins, and you can move it around, and so, so it could be much less as well.
Thank you. And then the last question I had is, and I know I start, see document cameras here, and you indicated that that was for those classrooms that may have to get a smart board, given them the option to be able to have at least some material so they can project the materials on the wall, whatever. I'm curious as to, is there a particular number of smart boards we would need in order to satisfy all the teachers who wish to have a smart board? Or are all of our smart board needs being met with the, I believe we had 20 in the budget this year? Is that going to cover all the classrooms where the teachers who want a smart board have a smart board in their room? And I guess, just looking at that, because, I mean, if there's, if there's a desire out there, and we can't fulfill all those desires for smart boards, I'd like to see us invest in the smart board before it dies, I mean, because, I mean, the capabilities that that provides.
I agree with you. One thing to preface, however, I'm hoping that we're at the stage where teachers need to have one in their class, that it's not just the pioneers, the ones who want the smart boards. We need them, they're a good instructional resource, and so, at the lower levels, and so we, we need to do that. But yes, I agree with you, and I don't, I don't know that number, Mr. Hall, I guess, I'm sorry.
It'd definitely be interesting to see that. Thank you.
Mr. Kemp.
I want to go back to the dean of students concept, and then it says, this came from the prior individual who was in the building, and at the time, the only real explanation about it was, well, it came from a building, it really didn't come as a recommendation from the superintendent. Now there's a different person there, and I heard Dr. Conway say, well, it was a request in the building. So I, you know, my inclination is that there's not a huge level of support at the central office level for that request.
Certainly.
Certainly what?
There always has been, absolutely.
Pardon?
There always has been. That school needs another adults managing students, and we don't have an assistant principal. I don't want to add the administrative staff. I'm sorry, I just answered that, but.
Well.
But not a permanent decision.
All right, well, all right, as your backing that, I'm inclined not to support it, and I'll give you a reason why. It is one of our challenging schools, but it's also one of our smallest. We have five elementary schools, Center Road has twice the number of kids, BCMS is three times, the high school has four times. I can only hear it now, what would be requested of other schools when they see that happen? And I don't think we're prepared to go this time seven or eight X. I just, you know, don't see it. If your, if your plan is to only implement it for a year or so, that's all well and good, but it's very difficult to take away a staff member once you put a, put a staff member in place, presumably for a good reason, whether it's Alliance money or not. So I'm very cautious about supporting that particular request.
It's so ironic to me, Mr. Kemp through Mrs. Fisher, that I'm not comfortable supporting much in the way of staffing it off, and it happens to be one that I thought might be worth the investment, because I think there's a unique climate at Maple Street School that could use a little additional support. And how nice to see Alliance dollars, if that kind of a position impacts the climate in the school like we'd like to see it happen. So that maybe it is something, based on the results of that addition, that we would like to transfer over to our budget, because we find that it's doing what we hoped it would be doing, if that makes any sense. I wondered, Dr. Conway, if there is, could you come up with a list of not so much personnel, but durable goods? I don't know how else to put it, more technology, the whiteboards, things that are less personnel-driven and more one-time investments, that we could really make those dollars work in a different way for us? I mean, that, that requires a board motion or whatever, so I guess I should be asking board members rather than the superintendent. If this list could be revised to eliminate positions, and not all of them, but include more durable goods.
Well, keep in mind that we couldn't fill all, we only have $825,000 to work with anyway.
Right.
So if we're giving the superintendent our priorities, that they might go by the wayside already, the personnel.
Then how do you expect, what do you foresee the mode that we work through this list? Item by item, or?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
How would you expect board members to respond to this list? Item by item, you want a blessing on, or?
This evening, just direction. We're still, this is the wish list, and I've heard from some people, you know, that agreement that the personnel shouldn't be in there, as I said, this was, this was not a list that was censored in any way. Every single thing that came in was just put on the list. And so that's, you know, we know there are some things we really would like to do, the Columbia Teachers College, certainly the wireless at the middle school, but there are other things that we're looking for, and we would love to augment the classroom libraries as well. Those are things we've been talking about for about five or six months in our, because we knew this time would come. But the rest of the items have come on here because of my direction was, I preferred by things as opposed to, to people. So that's just looking for input. You will have the final say when the, when it comes back, but it would be nice to get your input now to say, take that out, take that out, or make sure you leave that in. So it's entirely up to you and what. Mr. Stansfield.
I guess the one thing I'll say about staff is, I'm kind of surprised that the staff that we cut from the budget aren't necessarily represented here. Because all of these are things that were deemed less of a priority than those. So if we were going to address staff, I would think that we would address the staff that we had to cut as part of the budgetary process, like the middle school music teacher, where we heard that we were going to lose programs around that.
I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but with Alliance district funds, you can't use the funds to supplant something that was already in our local budget. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So we could not do that, because that was already in our local budget.
Even though we cut it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Unfortunately. Mr. Hall.
I want to start.
What I'd like to see is prioritizing, because we will be getting Alliance district funds for the next few years. What I'd like to see is a priority list on what would be really needed now, what we might wait one more year in, in that way, so that we can make a better decision on what you feel the priority would be. Because we don't always know what would be the most important. I do know that the wireless would be good for the middle school, definitely. And yes, probably the elementary schools right away, but we, possibly could we wait one more year for that? Because we need to get the, the most for what we're getting from this, so that we're getting a better idea of what the needs really are. Is the classroom libraries, are the, are the guided reading books, the shared reading books, are those a priority one? I heard that they're not as high as the classroom libraries. So if we could get a better idea and prioritize these lists, and make it look better year one, year two, and so on, so that we can, we can really set this up, so that we're using the funds most efficiently. Mr. Hall.
I would agree, you know, I'd like to see the priority. I think the items on here, short of the actual positions, there aren't any that I say, well, why is that there? I do also agree with Miss Arndt, but I think we need to ask ourselves, are there any other items that would fall potentially into a, you know, into this grant situation, where we could make a legitimate case of funding it within the grant for some of these other technologies or objects within classrooms that would help get us where we want to be? I think the, you know, any, anything that's going to increase learning, that we could make a case for, I think we should include it on these lists, if it's something that, you know, administration feels that it's something worth thinking about. Because again, these are the big chunks that, you know, if we fund them, we don't have to worry about the cliff, and we should take full advantage of that now, because, I mean, we've seen how long it's taken to get the smart boards that we have today, for example. The other thing that, you know, I think the enrichment opportunity that you have identified here at BCMS, I think that's a great idea, and if there's anything else like that, those are, those type of programs that we've been trying to implement, we haven't been able to find a way to get them into a budget that, if they make sense, we should at least get them on a list, so that we can at least consider, because we have a couple more years of this funding. And if it's something that we can prove out through Alliance district, as Miss Arndt has indicated, that this is a good program, it's going to be a much better sell to the town when we try to put it into our local budget.
Mr. Kemp.
And you talked about the supplant situation. Is there a timeline on supplanting? Is it for one year, a restriction from supplanting, or is it a timeline that might be over the duration of the Alliance funding overall?
I had never heard of a specific timeline on supplanting. But certainly you can't cut it today and add it, pay over the grant tomorrow. But, but if in another year, the board believes that something that was cut from the budget this year could be paid by Alliance grant, I would not see that as a, as a problem.
Well, that's what I wanted to know.
Because you want to bring it back.
Okay, so therefore, we don't have to wait till Alliance is over before we might offer that up again? If, are you sure? So in the next fiscal year, you could, what was the example we used a moment ago?
Music teacher at the middle school.
Yeah, okay, so, thank you. Would it be possible then to, to, to fund a music teacher, for instance, a year out?
I would think it would be. I don't see that it would be any problems with that.
I just, it occurred to me, I don't know what the rules are for this supplanting thing.
There are no hard and fast rules. Just you can't supplant, well, you can't take it from one bucket and put it into another bucket.
Until the next fiscal year?
Until the board changes, decides to change the program. So it would be new then.
Okay.
But once again, we would fall into a situation where adding staff that in, or after that.
Right. Well, whether it was a person or a thing, is what the supplanting has a, all right.
Can I just like to say something? One thing that nobody has mentioned, or was the professional development piece here, the Columbia Teachers College and the other professional development. And I know everything was learned, especially at our first meeting with the White House, that professional development for our teachers is one of the biggest ways to increase student achievement. So I would like to see that in there as well. Mrs. Arndt.
May I ask Mr. Burke a question for you? Mr. Burke, that standardized assessment in professional development, there was a question mark there, wasn't, wasn't no definitive, and it's been found now, would that be an opportunity to replace the reward with something? No, that's not what we're talking about. Okay.
Would you like to know what it is?
Yes.
Okay. What that is, is right now, as I said earlier, that we are developing all our assessments in-house, and don't have a really good way of collecting them or guaranteeing their line to the new standards. We are currently. We are currently putting out an RFI for standardized test bank to help us, you know, ensure that we are really accurately assessing our students and evaluating their progress on an ongoing basis. I'll give you an example. One of them's called NWEA, and that allows the ability for teachers to select certain questions that are aligned to with a specific content that they are working on that particular unit. It gives them immediate feedback on students, so these are more formative assessments. And then you're able to track that data and do progress monitoring, and then we can import that into our new student management system. So it's relieving the burden of teachers to develop assessments and really focusing on the data and the learning of their students, so that we can get a clear picture of where our students are on a regular basis. It doesn't take, you know, a long time, A, to build, and B, to implement in the classroom.
So this might be more efficient assessment?
Correct.
Might have to support that one as well, then. It's going to make assessing the data more efficient. So, yeah, the Columbia Teacher College, the standard assessment in professional development, and wireless. Pardon me? Did you say the wireless? Oh, yeah. And I could support Mr. Guss's first priority, I suppose. I'd like to see some... Maybe some additional information, but I won't discount Mrs. Bush's in the classroom doing it. But there must be... There must be a value to investing in more technology. So maybe Mr. Ward could get his wish list moved forward. His five-year plan.
Does anyone have anything else to add to this? Didn't give you enough to go on for the next meeting? Sorry to interrupt. Double the list. Double the list. Something about us. Okay. Good luck with that. And we'll find out more. Thank you so much for your work. Okay. Next item, 6.2, Safe Loops to School Project, Middle School.
This is, I'm thinking it says fifth year at this point, if I'm correct. Because the application was well on its way by July 2000. And it's almost a $500 grant, which Vernon did receive. It was originally to provide a sidewalk going from, I want to say, wood mirror apartments over the 100-year floodplain into the back of Warner Avenue. And because the 100-year floodplain was larger than the bridge, that idea was gone. Because we have students who live there who are actually walkers, and they walk down 83 and up Dart Hill to get to school. So it's changed. There was supposed to be a sidewalk on the west side of Skinner Road, so students could walk together to directly across from Skinner Road and then walk across. There would have been a lot of cut and fill. If you... Next time you go up Skinner Road, look at the west side. You can see it's not exceptionally flat. It comes down to the road and a little bit of a hill. So the grant has been changed and changed through our town engineers. And right now, we're looking at a little bit of a walk behind the school. That was another thing that was supposed to be done. It was connecting, and I don't remember the names, the streets Warner and the one that comes on the south side of Skinner. Actually connecting those two streets. That is not going to happen as well. But we're looking at raised crosswalks, crosswalk relocation in across Skinner Road School right now. One of them goes just onto the grass, and the other goes into somebody's driveway. So they're not exceptionally safe. A raised crosswalk in front of the school from the walk that comes down the front lawn into the school. It's not raised, it's just painted, and a few other things. So we're excited about the way it's going, a bike rack, things like that. But excited the way it's going. The original plan was going to have $88,000 in engineer costs. And about 2001, we discovered that and discovered that it would not be covered by the grant, the $88,000. At that point, we were talking with Mayor McCoy about how we might fund that, since neither side had budgeted that funding. And so we did talk about the capital nonrecurring fund. We talked about possibly splitting it. It now has gotten down to about $50,000. And so this letter arrived from Mr. Ward, and this letter is asking the board to bear 100% of that $50,000 or up to $50,000 that they are estimating will be the engineering costs out of capital nonrecurring. So I would present that to you. Mr. Recaro may know more about it, but I don't think so. This is not his grant now.
Mr. Stansel?
So with all due respect to the town, as I read this, there's a new pedestrian bridge going in and several other things. And while I fully appreciate that they would like us to fund the entire thing, it seems to me that there's more than just the students' walkway that we're discussing here, and that this has larger implications. So my personal inclination, given the state of our capital nonrecurring count currently, and knowing all of the many, many projects that we have to fund over the next few years that are significant priorities, would be to say that, you know, we'd be happy to split it with you, but we're not inclined to shoulder the entire cost.
Mr. Hall?
I appreciate your opinion there, Mr. Stansel. However, I believe it was the Board of Education who sought out the grant. It is a $500,000 grant. And I would hate to bicker over the $50,000 or take advantage of the $500,000 that the town will benefit from. And the council has one other way to help us with other things in the past. You know, when we were talking, the $100,000, they were willing to talk about splitting it. The $50,000, I think, is a reasonable request to come out of capital nonrecurring. And I would put that in the form of a motion that the Board of Education requests the Town Council to take the $50,000 from the capital nonrecurring fund for the engineering costs of the Safe Loops to School project.
For a second.
Second.
Any questions or comments, Mr. Stansel?
Through you, Madam Chair. Can we get the status of the current balance of the capital nonrecurring count?
Mr. Recaro?
Through the Chair, Mr. Stansel. The current balance is $295,47.20.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions or comments? Mrs. Bush?
I agree with Mr. Hall. I feel that the $500, almost $500 grant would be really important to our kids to get a safe way to school. And I agree, I do not see that we need to bicker. The Town Council has really been very generous in what they've done for us in the past, and I'd like to continue that relationship with them. So I would rather see it come out of our capital nonrecurring fund.
Mr. Stansel?
I just need to point out one more time. Look at the five-year capital plan and the amount of money that we are going to have to spend in that plan. It is significant dollars. And look at our capital nonrecurring count. It isn't there. So while I respect that we're talking about $25,000, we need every dollar that's in that account and more. So that's just my position on it. Thank you.
I'd just like to point out that I believe the town's engineering department has probably put in a lot of time and effort into this. So they have done a lot of work for us on this in particular, besides other things. So that I'm just... Any other questions or comments on this? And we'll bring it to a vote. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you very much. Motion carries. Okay. Item 6.3, report on Cape Jam the Hill.
Mrs. Bush? Yes. I attended the Cape Jam the Hill, and it was a day full of information, as well as the ability to talk to many of our legislators about some issues we have in the school system. Our first speaker was Governor Malloy, and he basically was talking about the different things that were... He had been working on over his tenure as our governor. He had something that really struck me. He has a program called Baby Scholars, where parents could put money towards their child's college fund, and the state would match it. And I wasn't aware of this before, but it sounds like something that could help a lot of our kids get to higher education. The second speaker was Senator Beth Bye, and she was very... She's very much a supporter of the early childhood education, being a former early childhood educator as well. And she is very much wanting to stop the unfunded mandates and make sure that the things that are put in place are funded. And one thing she pointed out that really hit me was that we really need to mobilize our board members. Because when she is sitting in a... Sitting and listening to people testifying, she's seeing that not a lot of the public schools are there to support the different things, but she's seeing a lot of the charter schools having representation that are really pushing for their needs, and they're getting the funding. So it was really important that she told us that we need to get out there, and we need to get vocal to our legislators, and we need to testify at some of the hearings so that we are not left out of the money pool there. Because the charter schools are getting the funding, because they are vocal, and they are making sure that they are there, and they're speaking up for what they need. So that was something she really stressed for the public schools, because that's how you get something done, is to be vocal. We also heard from Senator Fleischman, and he says that he would really want to push for more support for Common Core state standards and teacher evaluation system. He's really pushing that we... The state provides the supports, and that is something that he is really working on to make sure is in place for the teachers. All well and good, I did also go, after speaking with some of the legislators, I did go to the Alliance District meeting. And one thing, we spoke with Morgan Barlow, who is now the Division Director for the Alliance District Grants. And what they're really trying to do is streamline the process. And they worked on that at the January meeting. You were given a packet of all the different guidelines. Did you get that, or should I have you get a copy of that, Dr. Stansel? Okay, I'll make sure you get that. There was a meeting in January. He handed it out to us, thinking that all the districts had already received this. But I'll make sure you get a copy, even though I have my scribbles on the back. One thing that a lot of the school districts were very thankful for was that they were expanding the way we can use the funding, or giving really good communication to the districts, so that they can make decisions on what is appropriate and what is not through the Alliance District funding. And they really asked the different districts, the different Alliance districts, really pushed that we would get a better timeline that fit our budgets, so that we're not making our decisions after our budget's already constructed. So they're really pushing to get how much we're going to get and what we could get earlier in the year, maybe before January, so that when we're going to our budget process, that we're able to be able to work better within our budget instead of after our budget's already constructed. And that was a huge push, and many of the districts had that same idea. The National Center for Time and Funding, the collaborative, they have been working to extend the school day, and I think it's called... And they've been trying to pay the teachers and the IAs and use very creative ways to extend the school day. And one way they have been doing it is to expand the day by having teachers come in, like I think you had proposed that, teachers come in a later... A little later, and stay a little later, and work with the students so they can extend the school day. But there is funding for that through the National Center for Time and Funding, the collaborative. The other one is, I think we are also having our teachers go to the principal training, the LEED CT principal training, the Summer Institute, and the UConn Leadership Program, the O-92, is streamlined, and it's going to work with the LEED CT to focus on Alliance districts as well. So that was quite important. And the other thing is that you can use the Alliance District funding for parent universities, and you can use that funding to work with parents, to help parents help their children as well. And I thought that was an important part of the district. A lot of, you know, a lot of very open, candid discussion back and forth within the districts and to the State Department, so that they know our needs and coming up with some of these ideas that we can use our funding to make it better for our school district.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions, Bill? Thank you very much for taking the time to go and reporting back to us. We appreciate it. Mr. Kim?
Just one question about a few of the House bills are referring to strategic school How frequently does the state issue strategic school profiles?
The last one we had was from the class of 2011.
Yeah, that's why it's curious that they're referring to some of the... So I was really going to ask, is the state really issuing them on a yearly basis or not? Because the descriptors here of some of the legislation indicates that these things are to be included in these SSPs. And I thought, as you said, that they don't come to us the way they used to, if ever. Again, I don't... Are they gone?
No, they... They're... Well, if you go on the state website, you can find our 2011...
Do what?
Yeah, but that's... But we haven't received any. And we no longer upload information specific to that. I'm sorry, Mrs. Bush. I apologize. We... Because we used to have a specific report that we had to fill in all the blanks, and then they would replicate that into the form. But now, we just upload our student data three times a year, or our discipline data, or... So there are different reports that are normal reports, and they are now taking, at least that was my assumption, taking that. Because we didn't create the one for 2011. We didn't put that in. They did that themselves, but we haven't seen any updates since then. So they're not requesting it the way it was? They're not requesting it, so... Mrs. Bush? Through you?
That was a big complaint with many of the school districts, the superintendents, the board chairs. And that was something that was noted to many of the legislators that were there, as well as to the government. Because with the ability of technology, we should not be waiting several years to get our information. And so that was something that was noted and discussed with several of the legislators. So it is out there, and it is something that they're looking into, to make sure we're getting our information in a timely manner.
Okay. Thank you very much. And we'll move on to item 6.4, Board of Education Finance Committee Report. Carl?
Through you, Madam Chair. I will summarize the finance report, hit some of the highlights, and then be happy to address any questions through you, Madam Chair. So we'll start with the health insurance update, working aggressively with our brokers and collabora- and collaboratively with the town and their brokers. I'm pleased to report that our health insurance costs have gone from what we originally were budgeting as advised by our brokers at the time, 15%, when we started putting the budget together, down to now 6% combined with the town and the burden. These are, we have not agreed to these numbers yet, but these are our firm numbers and there's a possibility they may even go down slightly more. So more to follow about that. Next item that I'd like to draw your attention to in the Business and Finance Report is under the Fiscal Year 14 Budget Updates and a Quick Review of the Executive Summary for Account Balances. For your reference are all of our accounts, starting with the local budget. And if you go over to the right-hand column, the percent used at this point in time, that is our year-to-date expended, that's actual expenditures, plus our encumbrances, leaves us with $911,008.30, which represents a total percentage used of our entire budget appropriation of 98.2%. Additional on that page, you'll see grants underneath our local budget. If you flip over to the backside, you'll see our state accounts. And then you'll see our Education Capital Non-Recurring Fund, which we've already discussed the balance. Updated balance for our Food and Nutritional Services, our revenues as of this point in time of the report, which was March 6th, our school activity accounts, and then other, which are our transportation deductions. Those are deductions that we make to invoices that we receive where there's issues of not compliance with our contract. Now, following that is the year-to-date report in detail, which supports that local budget line item. In the executive summary, I'll draw your attention to a few of the line items, just to discuss briefly. There's a negative $8,000 in our salary in our affiliated line item 51123. At the time of this report, it was showing a negative balance because of the nature of these accounts, where we have somebody leave and then have somebody be hired. We do expect some variability in the count. We did transfer some money out. Now we've hired somebody, so we'll have to make a course correction. And you'll see that in the form of a transfer amendment for the next Finance Committee meeting. So I have no concern with that account line item. You'll also see under 51159, temporary salaries, a negative $12,498.41. I believe I mentioned this before in prior Finance Committee meetings. That account will be addressed towards the end of the fiscal year. It will be directly offset by a next step tuition revenue that we bring in, in an account that the Board of Ed manages. So I'm not worried about that account either. If you continue to flip through the pages, we are showing a negative $28,000 balance under the town pension. That's the difference between what we agreed to budget with the town in the actual experience. So that obviously will need to be addressed at some point before the close of the fiscal year. And then the last two negative accounts are our special ed accounts, which we expect to be negative at this point in time. I will like to draw your attention to 55810, tuition to other LEAs. That encumbrance has increased by $200,000. And you have, you won't see it in this report, but you'll see it in the next one. The reason why that it has increased by $200,000 in this report is because we had to encumber the funds for what we expect to spend through the end of the fiscal year for special education, charter, magnet school tuition. As you know, in preparation for next year's budget, that is an included line item, was not included in this year's budget, we have to account for it to give an accurate budget picture. However, what you'll see in the next finance report is through our special ed department, there's been a lot of fluctuation, as expected, in the account between students that are budgeted for and covered at a certain amount, brought a district tuition that we pay, and some of those students come back. And so there's changes where we can put some of the encumbered funds back to available funds. So at this point in time, we're seeing a direct offset of the increase for special education and magnet school in what's going to be released in the next report for our students that are coming back in district and other savings that Mrs. Buecher has found in the special ed department project. Moving forward with just a couple more highlights before we open up for questions. In your packet, you'll see budget transfers and amendments. There is one action item through you, Madam Chair, that we're looking for approval on, and that's the first one, which is the budget amendment request to transfer $29,172.26 from various salary line items to our substitute teacher account. We requested the board approve this. We're doing this for two reasons. The first primarily is we have employees in those salary line items that are on unpaid leave. There's a cost for us to hire substitute teachers, so the right thing to do is to appropriately shift that cost to the right class center, and that would be our substitute teacher line item. And the second reason we're doing it now, because we're looking very closely, and primarily Mr. Burke has done a lot of work in this area as well, in looking at our substitute teacher line item, knowing that we're coming into the time of the year where we expect to see that line item be heavily used. So we want to do as much as we can to decrease that, that impact. So we want to move those funds over early on, as early as possible. So we ask for your approval for that budget amendment request.
Mr. Kent.
So, Wu.
Sir, second. Mr. Wu.
I second that motion.
Any other questions, your comments? All those in favor? Sir, now, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, for a couple more highlights. In your report, something you may not have seen before, and it's the Besby School Vending Machine Income Report. This is an agreement that we have with the Educational Services for the Blind Department at the state. We have vending machines in the majority of our schools. We profit share with those vending machines received. The business office is now tracking those revenues and we have to report back to the state on what we do. What you're seeing in your packet is just the, the front-page copy of the summary of those revenues, but behind that, what we send to the state is a full report that can be audited to account for every one of those expenditures in our schools. Those funds are put into a student activity account and they do not go into our local budget. And the last, last couple of updates, I'm pleased to report that our six cent certification through the State Department of Education in our Food and Nutrition Services Program application has been approved. We started and submitted the application on time back in August. We have been working with the State Department of Ed to have this application approved. This is a fairly new program from the State Department of Education. Basically, the bottom line is if we comply with the new meal pattern and nutritional standards that the State Department and USDA set forth, that there's an additional six cents for all lunches that's paid free and reduced that we're entitled to receive. It is a retroactive payment that goes back to the beginning of this fiscal year. So for this fiscal year, we're expecting to bring in an additional $20,000 in revenue into our Food and Nutrition Services Program. Again, that's an account not included in the local budget. It's a separate account, but that is good news for our program. And then the last item is the roof replacement and photovoltaic system update. Tonight, for, for those members who were not at the last facilities committee meeting, we wanted to share with the entire board our roof asset management program and roof survey report. That's in the binder before you. Also included in that binder are the draft financial statements that Crac, in partnership with their energy vendor, DBS Energy, have provided for us to start looking at. Again, just to reiterate, we're in the very early phases of exploring this project. There are several meetings that have to happen, including additional information from the vendor to the board in the form of presentation, something that we're recommending that happens in the near future. And of course, more importantly than that is meetings between the board and the town through the superintendent and mayor's office as well. So Dr. Kryner, if you want to tell you anything to that.
Thank you, Mr. Macar. Your findings? Just as an FYI, the school construction application process ends or begins on June 30th every year. If you are going to ask for school construction funding during the next legislative session, you have to have it in by the previous June 30th. And so if we were looking to replace roofs in the summer of 15 and that fall and over that winter, we would need to have an application in by this June 30th. So we would have to write all the educational specifications and, and this is a change in the law, and we would have to have town approval for 100% of the amount of the project, even though we get 71.78% reimbursement and even though there might be other offsets to the, to the project, such as the use of the photovoltaic panels on the roofs, that might give us an energy credit. So even though those things would be in place and the dollar amount might not be out, we still have to have that in place. I think that it would be foolish for us to think that we could have a referendum between now and June 30th and get all the information out. I think that the board would be prudent to listen to the information from the roofers and from Crac. I'm hoping to have them at the next meeting or at your first April meeting to get that information, work with the town, and hopefully get all the information out there and have a referendum over the next fall or winter so that the funding could be approved. So it's, we're still, as Mr. Macar said, in the infancy stages. We have three roofs that do need replacing. We do have leaks in one of the schools, Skinner Road. We've been patching them and putting buckets out, et cetera. So it's not, the other two are not in great shape, but we don't have the leaks that we do at Skinner. But in order to do the projects right, this is the timeframe that we have discussed. We met early this morning on this. And I think that's the most prudent course of action for the board is to go a little more slowly and get it done and do it right. The middle school roof is one of the other two roofs. Northeast is the third. But the middle school roof is, is failing, but we are, but we're limping along. So we may have repairs by waiting an extra year. But this means if we had the funding approved next winter, over the winter season, and got the application in in the spring of 15 or by June 30th, 15th, then it would be in the following legislative session in the spring of 16, and it would be approved by the end of that session and construction could begin in the summer of 16. So we're talking, we're out just over two years right now to get those done.
Mr. Stansfield.
I just have a comment. I know we're going to address the, the decrease in the, the health insurance with the, the next topic, but $608,000 is a lot of money. And if we had had an accurate figure when we started the budget process, some of that money perhaps could have been devoted to other things and wouldn't be now on the chopping block because of an overestimation. And I understand it's, it's a difficult challenge, but it seems to me that we should be able to come a little closer to the mark when we're budgeting for health insurance. We started at 20% and we cut it to 15% and we're told we were being, you know, aggressive with that. And now it's 6%. So I'm a little disappointed that we couldn't have a more accurate number for our actual budget assessment.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions or comments, Mr. Macar or Dr. Kryner? Mr. Kent.
Yes, Michael, the transfers, there's a, there's a transfer of $93,000 from secretarial custodial prescription drug to two other accounts. Why is some of it going to a contingency account and not for something more specific that we might purchase?
Through you, Madam Chair, to Mr. Kent. This is part two of a budget amendment request that was approved by the board to address several employees that have left our service and some employees that have passed away, in which we had to use funding from the severance account and from the contingency account to make those payments. So we're making those accounts whole and not putting them in the line.
Okay, so it had to come from existing severance accounts to yet another severance account, to 70, but I guess I didn't understand why 30,000 of it is, is being parked in a contingency account.
Through you, Madam Chair, because we use the contingency account to make the payment in a timely manner to the family. And now we're making that account.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Macar or Dr. Kryner? Okay. Thank you. Now, oh, sorry. I just wanted to say that I am thrilled that we have found savings in our healthcare and other accounts like that. And I think that we need to make sure that we're doing things to save money for the town and to make sure that we're using these efficiencies without cutting services. So I'm thrilled that we're finding this and I think that it's a good thing. And it's good that we're not having to dig into our pockets and into our taxpayers' pockets to be able to not make the cuts and still have what we have now. Mr. Stansfield.
I'd just like to point out that we did cut significant items from the budget. So this is not without cost. And that's, all I'm asking is that we have the most accurate numbers possible going into those budget discussions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think we will move on to item 6.4A, Budget Adjustment. As you can see in your packet, we received a letter from the mayor indicating that prior to his delivering the mayor's budget to the town council, he is making a $608,000 reduction in the line item that is for the Board of Education. And he has made suggestions that the board, the council and the mayor obviously cannot tell the board where to cut, but he has made suggestions as to where that would be. In dental insurance, he has suggested $30,000. And these are accounts that, that he is well aware of because we do go out to bid together. So he does know what the costs are. We go out to bid. It is very late that we get the information back. As you can tell, we try to stay very close. Prescription drugs, we are self-insured for prescription drugs and that number, my guess is, is reflective of this year's number. And so it's, it's probably a risk, but I think the mayor believes that's a good risk. In addition, medical insurance, you can see that's an additional $321,708 based on the numbers we received on Friday that are a 6% increase. The switch to town's health insurance broker is $60,000. I would say that is an exceptional risk. I would not recommend that at this time. The town pays approximately $60,000 for their broker. The board pays approximately $125,000 for their broker. We're off-cycle because we certainly do want the same broker. And we are investigating that. We have not, we are under contract for one year right now, but I have not signed the contract going forward because we are investigating this. The board has many more benefits in, with their broker than the town does. They, our broker also works for our retirees. We have a number of retirees and they pay their insurance by the month. Right now, we've got a service where they get, actually get a little, a book or a payment slip and they have to return the payment. This was the former person we had doing this, used to go driving to houses and knocking on doors and saying, "You didn't pay this month." And so now we have a professional group who is, is doing this. So as much as our former person gave it the personal touch, we have done this. So we think we're not comparing the same thing and that is, that is just our concern. So whereas, we also have, it's more of a per person or per group of people. So I would not recommend the last suggestion of the mayor. It may happen and it may come down. I don't know that it would come down that much. So, but the other three I certainly would recommend and Mr. Macar knows the numbers as well and he may have a comment.
So you do believe these dental insurance and prescription drugs are realistic numbers for us to go with? So.
Could I just comment that if we, because we didn't have these numbers, and I understand why we don't, they just don't come in in time for us to include them in our budget, but it, it would have been, we might not have made some of the painful cuts that we made if we'd had this information. So I'm, I'm wondering if there's any worth to discussing not making those entire cuts, making those reductions in those accounts, but putting something back in that was painful for us to take out or if it's necessary to, to comply with the request. And right now, it's just the mayor's request for a reduction of $608,000. Did I ask that right?
So you're suggesting possibly putting more money back in? After reducing?
Just for, yeah, just for discussion purposes. I mean, I understand that these numbers are real and can come out of our budget. We also took things out of our budget that Mr. Stansfield would do, that were painful to do, that we may not have had to do if this information had been available at the time.
Except that we've still been asked to reduce our budget.
Except that we've still been asked to reduce our budget by six hundred and eight thousand dollars.
I understand, but that's the budget that the mayor turns over to the town council. It's really the town council's, kind of like what we do, the town council's decision. I'm not going to be lame like that.
No, thank you. Mr. Stansfield?
Understanding that this is the mayor's thinking, it's our job to advocate for our budget before the town council. And in doing that, who knows? So I would rather see us hold off on this particular motion until we've had a chance to make that attempt.
Well, we have an opportunity at that discussion with the town council on Saturday. Would that be an opportunity to discuss and make changes then? Or should we really be doing it in advance of that meeting?
On the twenty-ninth, at nine o'clock, the board will be presenting the budget. And it's the town council's meeting, so it's not our meeting. We're invited, and so we answer questions. I've not heard of a discussion back and forth. It's not really a workshop. It's their, it's their meeting. So I've never heard of that.
There's a public forum.
There is a public forum.
You can say what this, they're willing to have.
Yes, there is. Thank you. So really, this should be taken care of prior to, so we're all discussing the same, discussing the same budget?
Mrs. Bush?
I would like to, I actually would like to make these reductions to the dental insurance, prescription drugs and medical insurance. I'd like to make that in motion. Do you need the object codes and things like that?
Yeah.
Okay. I, with Dr. Conway's advice, I'd like to hold off on switching the broker, but I think we can easily take these three items out. And I'd like a second.
Mr. Kent?
The amount is four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and eight.
Thank you. Further discussion or comments? Mr. Kent?
Well, it doesn't, first of all, I think that the reduction is substantial, but it is also not the six hundred and eight thousand, so we're going to have to defend that fact because really it's just under five hundred thousand. So we're really not giving into everything we're being asked to give into in terms, in terms of a six hundred and eight thousand. So I don't know how happy they're going to be with that, but, you know, we're taking the advice also of the superintendent and reducing it by about five hundred thousand. It doesn't go unnoticed, though, that our alliance funding request is almost to the penny what they're requesting that we cut, in case you haven't noticed this page here. They're requesting six oh eight be cut, and it's six oh three we're getting from Alliance.
That's interesting. I think it also may be that they want it to only have a million-dollar increase and taking six oh eight.
Through the chair, I would like to ask that the superintendent, as part of the defense of this budget, since I believe you're the one that primarily presents this to the town council, that we make sure that we do defend the difference between the, what the mayor has cut our budget and what we have agreed to cut. You know, at this point, the budget the mayor presents will have that extra money cut from it. So if it's accepted as is, we will have to find that money. So I hope part of the defense is asking the town council to restore that difference.
Just one last comment. I'm going to support the motion because it's my understanding from the business manager that that's appropriate to do. I just think the message that should be delivered loudly and clearly, too, is that the board already, prior to this request, had cut significantly from the budget. And I think that's important to let council members and the mayor know that the budget we sent over already represented significant cuts.
All right, we will vote on the budget to, I mean, excuse me, on the motion to cut four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars. All of those in favor? Yes. Item six point five, discussion on information received and voided. Executive session. Mr. Wood?
Make motion that we enter to executive session and the superintendent and business manager for the purposes of discussion. Item six point five and six point six.
Say a second.
And also push that we extend our curfew till business is completed.
Well, let's do one motion at a time. Let's do the extension first. Was there a second on the extension of our meeting? Second. Any comments, questions? All of those in favor? Yes. Okay. Now, the...
The motion to, go into executive session inviting the business manager and superintendent.
Is there a second on that motion? Second. All of us in favor? Any comments?
Look, I work for insurance company, man. I know when opening a...
Since there's not going to be any action on the executive session, executive session, could we ask to finish up the rest of the meeting?
Yes, that's a good idea.
So item seven point...
All right. Thank you. Here on that extension. Yes. We'll make it a very quick.
For us, we don't do that long. Mike, turn on.
Especially in your yellow folders this evening, I didn't give you the entire agenda for the town council budget hearings, but I did give you the two pages I thought were pertinent. Saturday, March 29, beginning at 9:00 a.m., we'll be reviewing the education budget and the capital improvement budget from education. And then on Wednesday, April 2, at 7:30 p.m., that is the evening that the town council plans to approve the budget. And so that certainly may be of interest to you. You may not, I do plan to go, but so those are the, those are the two, just to bring those to attention.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have anything for the calendar? Okay, item 8.0, opportunity for questions from the press. Press is not here, so that leaves us with one last motion. Mrs. Bush? To adjourn. There's a second. Mr. Stansfield? All of us in favor? Mr. Stansfield?
That's my question. Twenty-one.
I need to...
That's my question. Twenty-one.
I need to...
That's my question. Twenty-one.
I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one. I need to...
That's my question.
Twenty-one.